David, do you want me to just jump right into the training?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. You missed it. The PowerPoint, a copy of the PowerPoint is in front of you. So today's training session is just a quick case law update. I have about seven new cases I thought were interesting enough to present them to you. I don't know if it'll take the full 30 minutes, but we'll see how it goes. So the first case I wanted to bring up is Greenville Fire District versus Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Greenburg. This case was decided in 2022. Funny enough, my firm represented the Greenville Fire District in this case. So I want you to pay attention to the facts that you have on your slide. I'm just gonna go through them. This, this case is about the statute of limitations and whether the petition was filed on time. So I lay out a couple of key facts. First, the board, the zoning board of the Town of Greenburg granted the application of formation shell-born senior living services for certain area variances related to the proposed construction of an assisted living facility. So here's the timeline. On April 20th, 2017, the ZBA as lead agency voted to adopt a conditional negative declaration pursuant to seeker. That decision was filed with the town clerk on April 24th. At a meeting held on June 22nd, 2017, the ZBA voted to conditionally grant the requested area variances from the former town, from, from the Town of Greenburg code, which authorized construction of the project on a site which was less than four acres in size and more than 200 feet from a state or county right-of-way. On June 27th, the results of the June 22nd meeting were filed with the town clerk. On July 13th, the ZBA filed a certification of decision which set forth the ZBA's findings. Then, on August 11th, 2017, the petitioners, the Greenville Fire District, commenced the CPLR Article 78 proceeding to annul the ZBA's adoption of the conditioned negative declaration and its determination granting the area variances. So the question is, was the petition filed on time? I'd like the board to take a guess.
Okay.
And maybe, I'll give you, I'll give you-
I had a case in the second department that concerned timeliness, like, three months ago. Yeah, so I'm interested.
So just, if you're having a hard time making a decision, this Article 78 proceeding challenging a zoning board's determination based on alleged vi-
Certification. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, determination based on alleged violations of seeker is to be commenced within the applicable 30-day statute of limitations following a decision that renders the final consideration of seeker issues. So it's a 30-day statute of limitations.
So I would, based on the argument I advanced in the second department, I would say no as well.
Anybody else want to opine? Judy, you said no.
Can you repeat the standard again?
Yes.
The standard is, so Article 78 challenging a zoning board's determination based on alleged violations of seeker is to be commenced within the applicable 30-day statute of limitations period following a decision that renders the final consideration of seeker issues.
It looks to me like that was-
The fact that they didn't file April 24th.
Certification till the 13th, July, that counts.
So I'm gonna say the court said it was timely, but I don't agree with the court.
So you say it wasn't timely, you say it was?
The court in my case said it was timely, and frankly, I thought it was results-oriented, but that's a different story.
So you think the court said it was?
No, well, no, I think on the merits, it wasn't.
You was, it wasn't, okay. Montes, any thoughts?
I don't think it was timely. It doesn't sound like it was.
Yeah. Okay. Elaine?
Yes, it was timely.
It was timely. Okay, so we're a little split here. So the answer is no. The petition was not filed on time. The Supreme Court determined that the petitioner's challenge to the ZBA's adoption of the conditioned negative declaration became ripe for review, and the limitations period began to run at the time the ZBA granted the requested area variances. Any such challenge had to be instituted within 30 days after the ZBA's determination was filed with the office of the town clerk. So here, that period began to run on June 27th upon the filing of the ZBA's meeting results, which memorialized the ZBA's determination and recorded the vote of each of its members. Since this proceeding was commenced more than 30 days later, on August 11th, dismissal of the proceeding was proper. So we lost that case because we were trying to argue that it started with the certi- certification of the decision, and the court said, no, it was memorialized in the minutes, and that's when it started. So.
Did anybody advance the position that the decision occurred on, that it became a final decision on June 22nd?
We argued that it became a final decision on July 13th.
Well, right, but I mean, was the other side saying July, June 22 or June 27?
June 27th.
No, nobody argued April 24th?
Nobody argued April 24th. The other side argued June 27th. All right. This case is about special use permit standards. Now, this board doesn't approve special use permits, but I think it's a good thing to know, and we've talked about this in some of our other training sessions. So this case is Manchurian versus Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Newcastle. It was also decided in 2022. In this case, my firm represented the Town of Newcastle. So here, the owners of properties that neighbored a rehabilitation facility for disabled and chronically sick children brought proceedings under Article 78 challenging the town zoning board of appeals determination granting the facility's application for an amended special use permit to expand the facility. And they granted area variances from the requirement that nursing homes had to front a state or county road. So in this case, the nursing home did not front a state or county road. The ZBA granted a, a area variance from that requirement. The question in this case was, does the ZBA have authority to grant an area variance from a special use permit requirement? What do we think?
I would not think so.
Montes, you said no?
I would, I would not think they had the right to do that.
Elaine, any thoughts?
I think yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Yes. David?
I'm inclined to say no, but I'd, I'd wanna do some actual research on that before taking a position.
Judy, you want to opine?
I would say, since we can't grant special use-
Well, ZBA's can when they, when the-
We used to.
When the municipality gives you the authority.
Right.
You can grant special use permits. So in this case, in the Town of Newcastle, the ZBA has the jurisdiction to approve or deny this particular special use permit.
I'm gonna say yes.
Okay. So, yes. The court said that the ZBA properly granted sunshine and area variance from the nursing home's special use permit frontage access requirement. The ZBA has the authority under town law to grant an area variance from any requirement in the zoning regulation, including those for special use permits. So some people argue, and this is what the Manchurians were arguing, is that it's actually a use variance. If you don't meet the special permit requirements, you need a use variance to allow that use. And here, the court was saying, no, you can get an area variance for relief from that specific special use permit requirement. In this case, it was about the frontage, and they said that is, is a reasonable area variance. So there you have it.
In the city of Beacon, that could not happen, correct?
In the city of Beacon, the ZBA doesn't approve special use permits.
Right, but no one could appeal to us a decision by another body, could they?
Yeah, so the, if the planning board, if, there was an application for a special use permit before the planning board, and they didn't meet the special permit requirements, they could come and file an application for the ZBA to get an area variance from that special permit requirement. So the ZBA could still be involved in a area variance pertaining to a special use permit, even if you're not approving, ultimately approving the special use permit.
So if, if we approved a variance in that instance, hmm.
So like, in this case, let's say the planning board was the one approving the rehabilitation facility. If they needed the area variance from the frontage requirement, that would be an application to the ZBA, in which case you'd review it in terms of the five factors.
Hmm.
Does that make sense? Answer your question?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be a use variance. As long as that requirement is in the zoning code, you have the authority to grant an area variance from that requirement. If it's any requirement, any other requirement, say it's like a requirement in the noise ordinance, that you cannot get, grant a, a variance from a noise ordinance requirement. Does that make sense? Because it's not a zoning code. Your jurisdiction only pertains to the zoning code.
Oh.
What?
I just read the headline of the next one. I got excited.
Yes. Here we go. So this is a case my firm was not involved in. I just happened to find it online. In this case, the ZBA approved an area variance to construct a modest addition to a single-family residence. After weighing the area variance factors and considering the evidence in the record and the public comments presented over the course of two public meetings, the zoning board approved the condish, approved with conditions the area variance. The zoning board adopted findings of fact addressing the variance factors, concluding based on evidence in the record that granting the area variance was, will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, will not be a detriment to the nearby properties, cannot be reasonably achieved by any other method, is not substantial, and will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Notice that the ZBA did not say anything about self-created. Did the zoning board's findings lack a rational basis, and were they inconsistent with the law because the zoning board did not make a finding with respect to whether the hardship was self-created? The ZBA didn't talk about it.
I would say, yes, they lack rational-
Yes, they, they lack a rational argument.
Okay.
If they didn't talk about the self-creation aspect.
Jordan?
No, because it's a balancing test. So it wouldn't have mattered, but I feel dirty saying that out loud, but that's, that is what I think the law is.
David?
I may be ta, I may be taking an overly technical view on this, but um, I'd say, I would be inclined to think that without, without something indicating that the error was not harmless on its own, it's not reversible.
Okay.
I'm guessing that's not what the court said, though, based on your look.
Nope, nope. I was just scratching my eyes. Montes?
First, I don't think there's enough information for me to say that I think they made an irrational decision, because it really doesn't talk about in detail the public comments, and each case is a case-by-case basis, right? So it's not just a black and white to the five end questions.
Yeah, that's fair.
So that's how I feel.
Okay. Elaine?
Since you don't have to, use your microphone. You don't have to meet all five criteria. Missing one would not have made a difference to the outcome.
Great, everyone, great points. The court said that the fifth factor shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals. It shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. In determining whether to grant area variance, a ZBA is required to weigh the benefit to the applicants of granting the area variance against any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community affected thereby, taking into account the five factors. A ZBA is not required to justify its determination with supporting evidence with respect to each of the five factors, so long as its ultimate determination balances the relevant considerations and was rational. Whether a hardship is self-created does not preclude the granting of an area variance, and a ZBA does not need to justify its determination with supporting evidence for each of these facts. The fourth department further held that the ZBA rendered its determination after considering the appropriate factors and properly weighing the benefit to the applicants against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood if the variance was granted, just like they're required to do under statute. The court further concluded that the record establishes that the ZBA's determination had the requisite rationale. It was therefore an error for the lower court to substitute its judgment for that of the ZBA, even if such contrary determination is itself supported by the record. So I think this court raised some really good points. Even if there's another way to go, if the ZBA's decision is supported, then the court must uphold, uphold that decision. It goes back to what we always talk about is building a good thorough record, because that's what's going to be the basis for your determination. I think the second thing that really kind of blew me away with this is that the fourth department was like, self-created? Doesn't matter. A detail I didn't include is that the court was like, obviously it's self-created, without any more details. It's like a one sentence, and this was the only case I could find.
You didn't include that per, on this piece of paper?
I'm so sorry.
True.
Because I knew you'd ask questions. The next question is, why did they say that? And they don't have a, a reason. They're just like, obviously, this, this factor doesn't matter.
Now, let me throw it at you this way, because you've read the decision and we haven't. If what was in the record was a substantial amount of discussion and conflicting evidence about whether and to what extent, probably to what extent, better consideration, this was self-created, and the zoning board simply granted the variance, totally ignoring that factor, that might look a little bit different in front of a reviewing court.
Yeah, I think so. I think it just is going to depend on what's in the record and whether the decision was supported. In this case, the court just emphasized how they went through the balancing test and how their ultimate decision was justified. But interestingly enough, I mean, it had to get to the fourth department, which means in the lower courts, it went the other way. So it's, you know, I just, we always want to emphasize the importance of building the record and balancing, in your, you know, it's always better to balance all five factors, and we do a very good job of touching upon each of them.
But this is five factors, right?
No, the, it's five, but you're, the fifth factor you're seeing is whether or not it's the minimum variance necessary. The court, you know, put that in their list of factors. That is not technically one of the five factors. It's the overarching theme of the variance.
Do you think the court felt that way specifically because of that factor, and if another factor was omitted?
Um, again, I think they'd emphasized the balancing test. It was very interesting that it happened to be the self-created, the one that we always are just like, this is not determinative, and that's, you know, what the court kept saying is like, this factor doesn't really matter. And I don't know if it was one of the other factors. I would, I think that the results would be the same, say, if they didn't talk about substantiality, if there was a clear balancing, and there was enough in the record to, you know, favor granting of the area variances.
It'd be interesting to see what a use variance appeal would look like with the same.
Well, and use variance is, is different because it's not the balancing, and it's interesting, there's not a use variance case in 2022, or 2021, or 2020 that I came across. I mean, maybe I just wasn't looking hard enough. I did a very broad zoning board search. And I think if you're going to go back and read the decision, because I can picture you maybe not sleeping one night and wanting to read it, I'd recommend reading the fourth department decision and also the lower court's decision. There's a lower court decision, while it goes the other way, gives a little more detail and a little more background information, and then the fourth department was like, they were wrong. Like, this doesn't, they, they met the criteria. But, you know, for the sake of efficiency, we're just kind of, I'm just kind of giving you like a little taste here. But everyone's points are right, you know, when you look at all the facts, that's what matters. Moving on. So this case came out in 2021. It's about zoning board review authority. So on June 6th, 2017, and July 12th, 2017, the Yonkers Department of Housing and Buildings issued temporary certificates of occupancy to Lowe's Home Center, authorizing limited use of a substantially completed improvement located in the city of Yonkers, specifically in Ridge Hill. I don't know if anyone hangs out in Ridge Hill, where my doctor's offices are. Anyway, the improvement is a large part, is part of a larger development known as Ridge Hill, which was approved in 2006. The petitioner, a union representing active firefighters of the city's fire department, argued that the mitigation measures identified during the Ridge Hills environmental review included the construction of a new firehouse. The petitioner appealed both temporary certificates of occupancy to the city's ZBA, arguing that they were not validly issued, given the absence of any firm plans to construct the new firehouse. On October 17th, the ZBA dismissed the petitioner's appeal for lack of jurisdiction. Did the city zoning board of appeals lack jurisdiction to appeal, to consider the appeal from the union? This one's tricky.
Who conducted the environmental review?
The planning board in 2006.
Is that relevant?
No. So I'll move, this one's hard. I think it'll, it'll make more sense when I, of course, after I explain it. So we'll, let me jump right into it. In a proceeding to review a determination of a ZBA, a zoning board's interpretation of its zoning ordinance is entitled to great deference, and judicial review is generally limited to ascertaining whether the action was illegal, arbitrary, and capricious, or an abuse of discretion. However, there is a narrow but well-recognized exception to the rule that zoning board's interpretation of its zoning ordinance is entitled to great deference that exists, where the question is one of pure legal interpretation of statutory terms, in which case deference to a zoning board is not required. Here, in this case, the basis for the petitioner's appeal of the city of Yonkers Department of Housing and Buildings issuance of a temporary certificate to the Lowe's was not grounded in the enforcement of any use or dimensional requirement set forth in the Yonkers zoning ordinance. The petitioner instead alleged non-compliance with certain purported mitigation requirements imposed during the seeker process. So what the court was saying is that the union of firefighters could not appeal to the ZBA because they weren't appealing any aspect of the zoning code. They were arguing that, hey, you can't issue this temporary certificate to the Lowe's because we were supposed to get a firehouse instead. And so the court said going to the ZBA was not appropriate. The zoning board had no right to consider that appeal because it had nothing to do with the zoning ordinance.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So once you, once you, once I explain it, like, you're like, oh, okay, that makes sense. And again, if everyone was reading the case, I'm sure, you know, you'd, you'd see it, although it took me a, a slow read to figure out what was going on. But I think I have some other cases, but I don't really want to rush through because I, I think they're pretty good. So David, if you don't mind, maybe we can continue this training session next month?
All right, let's do that.
And if everyone, you'll keep your packets?
Yep.
And maybe I'll, I'll take another look, see if I can find something else on self-created. There won't be.
It's coming, it's coming, eventually. You're gonna realize.
Well, I think, I-
Trash law.
I think the, the case that we just saw in the past year or so-
That's a crack.
It was like, it was like a little taste of the court just kind of pushing stuff.
It's going slowly.
Very slowly, you know.
All right, well, we are at 7:30, so good evening all. We are here for the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, and before we get started on our public hearings and other matters, just one preliminary matter to get out of the way, so everyone is clear on what's going on. The application, the, the application for secret review of the proposed development at 1113 Walcott Avenue, which I'm guessing at least some of the people who are here have come for. Just for your information, this is not a public hearing. This is sort of the equivalent of when city council has workshop. There will certainly be public hearings on this application, certainly before the planning board, and if the contemplated variances start before this, this board, but if you were planning on waiting an hour or whatever to speak, I just wanted to get that out of the way right now. Having said that, unless there's anything else, I think we should, someone should make a motion to open the public hearing on, or reopen the public hearing on agenda item number one.
How about the minutes?
Two minutes.
The minutes, thank you. Has everyone had a chance to look over the meeting, the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to make, does anyone have any edits or changes?
One edit, you're missing me on the attendees. It's okay.
What was that?
I was missing as an attendee, being identified as an attendee.
Oh.
Okay, good. So unless anyone else has anything further, I think somebody should make a motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Second?
We have a second from Mr. Hogg. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? All right. Minutes are approved on a 5-0 vote, and now I believe we can reopen the public hearing on agenda item number one.
Motion.
I have a motion, a second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Chacho. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So I don't know who was, if anyone was going to address us, or whether we should just start talking.
Jerry, do you have, do you have any of the stuff we workshopped last time, or no?
Yes, I do, I do. You have your laptop, Jordan? Would you like me to email that to you?
Do you mind?
Yeah, just for purposes of the posting, I, I kept it clean.
Yep.
Good evening, board members. So as we left off last time, I got the impression that some of the board members wanted to do a site visit. There was only two, I believe, prior to last month's meeting that actually drove by the site, the neighborhood, and so that was one of the reasons to adjourn the meeting. I presume at this point that is taking place by each of the board members. Speaking with the applicant, we have made a few changes. First of all, I'm John Sullivan. I'm representing applicant Rajan Kumar. So Raj and I have discussed a change to the project, and that would be to reduce it by 18 inches. So we would ask for relief from the side yard requirement of 20 feet to, in fact, 10 feet. I did a little research on some of the properties in the neighborhood of the 36 public notices that were sent. 18 of those actually have a one-car garage. Eight have a two-car garage. There are multiple properties with a shed adjacent to their house, which may not be the most attractive option. And then there's five that are actually not applicable. Some of those notices that were sent to our neighborhood, that's access from a different collector street, and it's a housing project. So I think we don't need to get all the details of the project. You're pretty familiar. We were here last month, so. Also, with the reduction, it's, the garage that we're proposing is essentially, it's, wouldn't be able to accommodate two cars. So as Raj mentioned- it's, it wouldn't be able to accommodate two cars, so, as Raj mentioned, um, you know, there's a need to be able to store lawn equipment, potentially park one vehicle in there.
Uh, no, it's basically one car garage.
I do have revised plans, um...
Yeah.
This is by hard to see from here, but, so this is the, uh, the site plan revised, with this being reduced to 10 foot, this is the site plan.
Got it, Drew.
We also did make some changes to the architecture, um, probably a little bit more of an improvement, as I mentioned last month, this is a raised ranch, um, sometimes a bit of a challenge to add on and, and make a visual appearance that's, that's tastefully done, so, um, there's a change on that, which is, this is the front facade. Also, it should be noted, if, with the 10-foot, um, addition off the property line, the maximum height is, is less than, it's about 19 feet, and we're allowed, I believe, in this zone, uh, 35 feet, so... And then the last sheet is the floor plan. As you can see here, it, it's basically a one-car garage, that's, that's oversized. So you could accommodate one car and some lawn equipment, um, snow blower. I can pull these off and pass the drawings around to the board.
Do you have, um, do you have, you probably don't, or, do you have an overlay of what it was and what it is, the old proposal versus the new?
It's reduced by 18 inches, so it's, you know...
From the...
They also, also the second floor is, is, um, you know, the bathroom's a lot smaller. It should be noted, too, that the bedroom is, is 12 and a half by 20 feet, that's the floor area. So I think one of the board members mentioned that's a pretty large bedroom, but you should keep in mind that the roof line on this side of the house is very low.
Very what?
It's low, ceiling height is low. It's not, it's not like a full-height addition, so, okay, yeah, the, the floor area is 20 feet, that's true, but it's, as you get closer to this outer edge, the ceiling is low, so...
How low?
At one point, it's, it's, on the outer edge over here, it's about six foot. Which is as tall as me.
So, right, like an eve?
Sorry?
Are we gonna need revised plans? I would have...
But the point being is that it's not full-height, so it's not so, the building is not so tall on that side of the house.
Dave, have we determined if any other corner lots in that development have been granted variances in the past?
I didn't look that up, Montos.
Those, he'll be submitting them to the city. You can request them, you can make a decision without them.
Sorry, for another question, but do we know how many corner lots there are in that development?
I don't have that info for you tonight.
Okay.
Drew, do you want to see the plans?
Yeah, we definitely need to see the plans, I don't, you know, I don't know what you did to modify them.
Thank you.
So that 10 feet is in addition, an additional 8 feet that the city has with the sidewalk all the way to the road, correct? So from the end of the structure to the road, it'll be a total of 18 feet?
A 10-foot variance.
It's 10 foot to the property line, so whatever the dimension from, from the property line to the, there's no sidewalk at that point, though, it's, the sidewalk stops, um, be, way beyond the front line of the house.
Okay. Thank you.
So what's the percentage there?
So instead of it being...
Sorry. I know, I asked the lawyer to do math.
What's the percentage, oh, change?
Yeah.
What's the...
From the, yeah.
You guys want to?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think you want to see the whole. I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
It's the first floor, it's the garage, but...
So it should be 7%? Because it went, goes from a...
A change, 7% change?
Yeah, well, it goes from a 50% var, it's now a 50% variance, at, a 10, a variance of 10 feet, before it was a 57% variance at 11.4.
Yep, okay.
Oh, thank you.
There is one. Not a new one, it's just, uh... Yeah.
Yeah, the additional... Above the garage. No, no, it's shrunk down. You can tell me the dimensions. So it's shrunk down to the dimension of the front of the house here, as opposed to the side.
So now it's a 10?
10, correct. So it goes from 11.4 feet to 10-foot variance.
There's one sentence in your, our workshop, uh, version, uh, that says there are no other corner lots in the neighborhood that have a variance permit, I'm sorry, to permit similar construction, is that, was that something that we said, or something you confirmed, or, I guess, is that a fact?
That was something that was stated, it's something that you, we could see from the Dutchess County Parcel Access, I did not go through and confirm that after the meeting 100%.
Okay.
It was based on a review of Dutchess County Parcel Access of what was happening at the corner lots.
And if I look at Zillow, it looks like there's four corner lots in the development, just...
Yeah.
Yeah, there are not, there aren't that many.
Right, there aren't that many.
Drew emailed me, this was her workshop version with our...
So our risk...
Kind of comments.
From that perspective, it was limited to those four, at least in that development, from setting precedents.
So are there any other variances that were granted on the side yard? Or we don't know?
I can't confirm for side yard, um, looking at Dutchess County Parcel Access.
Corner property?
But corner properties, for the most part, the corner properties do not appear to have any variance is, variances issued to them. Um, there, there does appear to be some homes in this development that may be closer to the side yard property, but I cannot confirm whether or not they have variances at this time. I'm just, this is just looking at Dutchess County Parcel Access.
Dutchess County Parcel Access is not an accurate depiction of, for measurements, I use it all the time, and I've measured stuff on Parcel Access, and it's just, you never get an accurate dimension. It's, it can be off as, I've seen it off as, as much as three feet. So it's really difficult tool to, to measure from, it's, it's a good visual, but...
And exactly, I'm not, I'm just looking visually, it is not...
They've got a program that, like, read, they've got a program that reads through the meets and bounds descriptions, but the problem is, especially in older parts of the city, those meets and bounds descriptions are a lot of times not consistent, and one of the things a surveyor has to do is...
Right.
Piece everything back together.
No, they die on line, it's inaccurate measurement when they do a boundary survey.
Right, this is just, just a visual, not an accurate measurement. Right, absolutely, second.
I drove through the whole neighborhood. There, as you said, there aren't many corner houses, there aren't many corners. I didn't see any of the corner houses that appeared to have had variances to put additions on that side. There were other houses that looked like they probably had variances to add garage on the side next to the house, next to the, but the corner lots, I didn't see anything like that.
Well, there is one observation I made that I did not, I hadn't made at the last meeting, which is that, um, overall, if, if we're looking at the, the, with a corner house, it's always a little bit of a, a matter of interpretation to say what's the front of the house versus the side of the house, but if we're looking at what I would call the front of the house, they've got a front yard of about 32 and a half feet with a requirement of 20. If they had the 20-foot required front yard requirement, we would be looking at a different orientation on the land, and one where in particular, adding on to the side in the manner being proposed would be doing a lot more to bump up against visibility around the intersection, but literal visibility in terms of cars driving up to the intersection, as well as the aesthetic consideration of how close is this built out of the corner, which I think is a mitigating factor. And it also seems pertinent that, um, as things stand right now, there is, the area that would be built over is asphalted and being used for parking, which while that's not the same thing as a structure being there, also means we're not really talking about, uh, land that has plants and stuff growing on it that we, that is going to be removed.
Yeah, that's correct, we're not increasing, um, impervious surface. And in fact, it's, to some degree, it's even, um, you know, a reduction. Um, the driveway, it's a fairly, you know, lo, you know, big driveway, and the addition's gonna sit right on top of it.
Does anybody want to see the...
Excuse me?
Does anybody want to see the plans?
No. It might be helpful, maybe just to start the conversation on the, on the five factors, to help get the conversation, um, get your, I, you're all very deep in thought, but maybe to verbalize those thoughts, we'll start with the five factors.
All right, we can do that, um, do we, do we want to see if there's anybody else who has comments first?
Oh, yes, it's still a public hearing, I apologize, that...
Well, no, I mean, I think it makes sense since we're just kind of sitting here, but let, let me just ask you one question, I know we went over this at the last meeting, but indulge me and refresh my memory a little. What ste, what, what realistically stands in the way of putting this addition on the backside of the house? I mean, I, I know it's a raised ranch, so architecturally, that's a little difficult to start out with, but...
Well, there's been, there's a, there's a patio in the backyard, there's a deck that was recently improved, that's off the dining room, um, so to cross over that is, um, you know, would be difficult. Also, um, I would believe, I'd, I'd have to look at the site plan, but, um, we probably need relief from a rear yard setback to some degree, and just the access for, for the garage in, in the backyard is just, um, is just not, uh, probably a better situation. I mean, it makes sense where, where we're proposing the addition, as we just discussed, the, uh, garage is going to sit on the existing driveway, so it makes sense.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? Should we see if there's anybody, is there anybody who came here who is interested in being heard on this application? Doesn't look like it.
And, and to confirm from last month, that the, you know, we had two, two letters, I believe, that had been, spoke in favor of the project.
Yeah, and I've, uh, I've, I've been, I don't want to disrupt the neighborhood, and I've walked around and talked to some of the neighbors, uh, just to make sure that this wouldn't be a disruptive project, and, uh, I feel everything I've done to that house since, uh, acquiring it has made it better, and improved the value of the neighborhood, and the aesthetic value also.
All right, so, do we want to, uh, do we want to close the public hearing and start, and have a, have a discussion and a vote on this? Do we want to have a discussion while the public hearing is still open? What's, uh, what's the board's feelings?
No, I think you closed the public hearing, right?
I'm sorry, didn't hear you.
I think you closed the public hearing, and what, do you, does anybody from the Republican want to talk?
I'm sorry? Yes, I live there and I plan to live there.
Absolutely.
I'm always happy when they want to make it smaller, even by a foot and a half. I think it helps that this proposed build is on a quarter lot, and not impending, competing on the neighbor's side. As far as the corner site, this is off the beaten path and not a major thoroughfare. It's a quiet neighborhood. Um, and would there ever be a sidewalk need there? I don't think so, the sidewalks go all around that neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I mean, unless anybody has any further questions, I think we should probably close the public hearing and, uh, make a decision on this.
Motion to close.
Second.
Second, all right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, let me pull up the resolution here, and let's walk through this. As to whether the, as to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will, will be created by the granting of the area variance, the board found that... Someone doesn't start talking, I'm just gonna, we're gonna do this like third-grade teacher style.
Is there a calling on us?
You want to call on us, or you want us to speak?
Speak freely.
So I don't think an undesirable change will be a result of this. I appreciate the applicant coming back and taking our consideration into, and bringing it down smaller, and as you mentioned earlier, there's a significant front yard that actually helps mitigate any concerns that I had from a visibility standpoint, and the fact that it's being built over the driveway, the existing driveway, is also a mitigating factor, as far as I'm concerned, so I do not see this as an undesirable change.
I concur.
I do also.
I disagree. Um, I, I, uh, I'm still stuck on the fact that this development was, uh, created after the zoning code was in place, the zoning...
The zoning code in that area uh, is what it is. Um, this is not, you know, a lot in the center of Beacon, which existed and was built on uh, before zoning existed. Um, I think that the code in that area uh, is the way it is and it would make a change uh, to the neighborhood, undesirable one, um, relative to the side and front yards.
Okay, uh, for my part, I think at the end of the day, my conclusion is that an undesirable change will not be produced. I, I appreciate what Mr. Hogg just said, in, in particular, when we're dealing with properties that were built after the adoption of the zoning code, it is a somewhat different animal than when you're looking at something that's a hundred years old and the zoning code just got overlaid on top of it. Having said that, now having had a chance to actually look at the property, um, both the fact that the parking spaces are already there, the fact that the front yard setback is significantly more than what it needs to be. And if we were building that, if they were proposing to do this from a point that's twenty feet back from the, or back from the street instead of thirty-two and a half, I think that would be a, a, a different proposition, as well as the fact that that sidewalk doesn't even come along the side of the house here. But that's good. We're, we're having some good debate about this. As to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variance.
Okay, I'll start. I think there is another way to solve this and as you alluded to earlier, potentially looking at the back. But I think that will cause significant disruption and I don't think it will be desirable. I would have concerns about desirability from that perspective. So I, I guess my answer to this is yes, I do think it can be achieved, but not in ways that I think would be desirable. At least from my perspective as a board member, not as a homeowner or neighbor.
All right.
I think it could be. It could be achieved through another method, but I don't see one that wouldn't require some sort of variance in the end. If they went back, you'd have the backyard even less on the, even if they went smaller on the side, you'd still need the variance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think feasibility is an issue. Um, for any other, any other plans, I don't see a feasible method to achieve what they're trying to achieve alternatively.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I agree that it can be achieved through another method, but um, as the applicant has stated, he'd need a variance for that too, so that he wouldn't need another variance anyway. And I do appreciate the fact that they did try to reduce it somewhat. Um, yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I.
I would say no, it really, it, it's really kind of hard to achieve it any other way.
Yeah, I don't, certainly it could be achieved. I don't think it's totally feasible to do it that way.
Right.
Certainly. It would change the character of the backyard quite a bit and it really wouldn't be much of a private yard left here anymore. Um, or a private aspect to the yard left. Uh, as to whether the requested variance is substantial, board found.
Yes, it is substantial.
Yes.
I agree it is substantial.
It's less substantial than it was last month, but still substantial.
Fair enough, but yeah, I don't, I don't, I think this is substantial.
Yeah.
As to whether a proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, the board found.
I don't think this is a problem. Um, last time I think they improved it if it could be improved. I don't, I don't think that uh, this factor was a concern for us. I think that um, public comment spoke to that as well.
Fair enough.
I concur with those comments.
I do too.
I do also.
And I do as well. As to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, the board found.
As always, yes.
Okay, so they're always self-created, but you know, we had that training session on self-created hardship a year or so ago. Is, is it self-created in a manner that we think is problematic? Are we effectively rewarding someone for doing something they shouldn't be doing here in the first place?
I mean, from that perspective, I wouldn't say it was self-created. I mean fundamentally, like you said, everything's self-created, but I'm okay with this one.
Yeah. I, I would say it, it's self-created, but not in a manner that uh, raises concerns for the boards, for the board.
Yep.
Okay, does some, I'd actually, no, let me go, let me go further. Do we think that the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community?
It's definitely not the minimum. I mean, it could always be cut down further, but I'm satisfied with where it is.
Anyone else?
Well, I'll just say that, you know, it, it. It is, given the, given the mitigating factor of that the house is set back further than it needs to be and that it is on top of a driveway that's already there, um, it looks like it is the minimum, to me, yes. It is.
I agree that it's not the minimum, but I don't have an issue with.
Well, just to throw this out there, I mean, arguably, the minimum is almost always going to be zero unless not granting the variance would create like a, a threat to safety or welfare.
No.
I mean. Okay, uh, let, so let me ask you one other question before we have a vote on this. If the variance is approved, we normally attach two conditions to all variances. Uh, one is that no, either building permit or certificate of occupancy is going to be entered, is going to be issued until all application and consultant fees are paid. And the second is that you normally have six months from the date of the variance to apply for zoning or for a building permit, six months after that to commence construction, and a total of twenty-four months after issuance of the permit to complete construction. If for whatever reason things happen that delay construction, a number of projects got delayed with the pandemic that started in 2020, for example, we can extend those deadlines for good cause, but if there is going to be an issue with meeting any of those requirements, it's better to get that addressed right now than later on.
I don't see that timeframe being a problem.
It's actually more because it's twenty-four months. It's basically thirty months total.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm pricing out materials, so obviously, we're in a weird environment right now. But twenty-four months, I, we should be able to land some, some scrubber.
If, if you run into things like you can't get delivery material or something like that, that's a good reason for an extension, so that's not your fault.
I appreciate that.
All right, does, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance.
And just to be clear, it's a, a motion to grant the ten-foot variance. I just want to make that clear for the record.
So that's the only one variance that we have.
But it was originally written for eleven and a half.
Right, so motion to grant the variance of the ten-foot as stated on tonight's agenda.
And to clarify, with, with the standard conditions just discussed.
Of course, with the standard conditions. And that's applicable to all for the public.
All right, second.
You got a second.
All right, uh, let me do a, uh, I will start on this end. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Smith, iron a.
Aye.
Mr. Hogg?
Nay.
Mr. Vakantis, did I say that right?
You said that perfect. Two meetings in a row.
Okay, good. I'll stop asking.
Yes, I approve. Aye.
Ms. Chacho?
Aye.
All right, I will also vote in favor, so the, the variance carries on a four-one vote. Today is Tuesday.
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth. I should be able to get in there on Thursday. So we should have that ready for you to pick up on Friday.
Sounds great. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good discussion.
Yeah, no, that was a good discussion.
Yeah, that was good. Make a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number two.
All right, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we are in the public hearing for the application for, or by Jonathan Miller, sixty-four Beacon Street. Good evening.
How are you? Um, I own sixty-four Beacon Street. I've owned it properly for about twenty years. I am looking to do an artist workspace for my tenant who resides at the premises. And I would like to see if we can get a variance for that.
I would just like to put in the record um, that Mr. Miller is my principal broker. I'm a real estate broker myself, associate broker at his firm. And um, I'm not recusing myself from this um, vote. Um, I don't think that I have any problem rendering a fair decision here.
Okay, and I'll, let me go ahead and just raise two preliminary matters. I don't think any of them are huge, but uh, oftentimes Ms. Gammels and Mr. Buckley and I will have a discussion before these meetings take place. And um, the first thing is, in the discussion we had on this, this variance is citing section two-two-three dash ten B one. We think it's probably actually ten C one or two. That doesn't have any impact on the variance that was noted. The substantive variance is the same, more of a technical matter. But the second thing, um, on page two of the application, there's a certification that there's no violations outstanding, et cetera, et cetera. And at least on the copy I have, it wasn't filled out.
I circulate the interior. They don't get them without making sure that's all taken care of. I can show you the copy that I have in my file.
Okay.
They can attest to whatever they attest to, we confirm.
Okay, as long as we've confirmed it, I don't really care if the, about dotted i's and crossed t's in the application, so. Okay. Okay, this is also an issue we addressed in that meeting, but that meeting obviously wasn't public, so I'm going to raise it now. Who is the anticipated user of this studio space?
The person that is actually renting the space. And that's the only person that will be using it.
Okay.
Renting which space?
I'm sorry, what?
The person who's currently renting which apartment?
They rent, they rent the apartment.
Which one?
And they want a studio for themselves, so that.
Just out of curiosity, the upstairs or the downstairs?
It's actually the two, to the two floors above. And they go through the basement to get to the garage, which is, so the only thing is the garage is not going to have anything structured different than the interior. The building itself will still remain exactly the same. It's just the interior will be finished for them to use it for a studio.
And just so this is clear, um, at least this is my understanding, were this not a two-family residence in a one-family neighborhood, a previous non-conforming use, um, they would not need, need to ask for a variance to convert their garage to a studio in the first place?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, I talked plenty. Somebody else must have something.
I think we should just go through the resolution.
Well, let's make sure we don't have anybody.
You're jumping the gun.
I'm jumping the gun, sorry.
And let me double check and make sure we didn't get any comments in in the last hour or two.
Can I ask Dave?
Sorry. Just for clarification, um, the application.
This is connected to the one apartment. This is considered part of the rental of the one apartment in the house, correct?
The code doesn't really, is not concerned with what unit rents it. Um, just keep in mind for the board that this is a, this is an artist's studio that falls under the home occupation law. This is not a, a commercial artist's studio. This is an artist's studio that's the same as permitted for a single-family house. Um, and it's, it's intended and to be used by a resident of the property.
So it's, it's not the same as a live-work space?
Absolutely not.
So it could not be rented separately from the house?
No, not legally, no.
My question was going to be, the application states extending a non-conforming use. What is the current non-conforming use?
The two-family and a single-family zoning district.
Thank you. John, the current, the current use is just living space, I assume, or would be, or has been?
What do you mean?
The current use of that structure, or is it the structure?
Where the people, yeah, it's, it's just a residential two-family.
But it's a garage, right, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, the, this spot is the garage.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and for the sake of good order, ask this question, but it's pretty clear to me what the answer is. Um, if this variance is granted, they're still meeting their required parking space requirements. If, if the variance is granted, they're still meeting their required parking space requirements, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Because you currently have two parking spaces, right, right in front of that?
Correct, right in front of them. One would be for the one tenant that's going to use the place and the others would be downstairs then.
Does the parking space requirement change?
No.
Right.
Yeah, because it's their pre-sixty, right?
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions? Should we see if anybody wanted to, anybody from the public wanted to address this? Does the applicant have any final words?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Kraft.
I think this would be an ideal artist's studio location, so close to town. Both from the aerial street view and the street view driving by, it looks like one structure. Building this for an artist and, and a potential artist tenant in the, that live in the main dwelling will only enhance the property. Upgrading it will beautify the neighborhood, taking it to the next level. Knowing the applicant's eye for real estate and aesthetics for quality, this would be a win for the setting a precedence for all of the other applicants that will come forward. Renting is a draw. Remember, Beacon is a walking city. So if they have a studio close to home, they don't have to drive out of town to work. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anybody else? Okay, is there any reason to adjourn consideration of this application, or should we close the hearing and vote on it?
Close and vote.
All right, so somebody needs to make a motion.
Motion.
Close and vote.
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, let me grab the resolution. Thank you. Okay, our first factor is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Anyone?
No.
No, not at all. I think it will enhance it, if anything.
I agree, no.
No.
I, I also agree, no. All right, second factor, whether the benefit the applicant sees can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variance.
I would say no.
No.
Agreed, no.
No, and I would say this is a hard no. Anything that involves building something on this property requires a variance since it's a prior non-conforming use. As to whether the requested variance is substantial, the board found.
Non-substantial.
No.
It's a weird factor in an application like this. I mean, the, the use is substantially different, I guess, it's not, I don't know. It's a weird question.
From the, the, the use is substantially, substantially different from the considerations that are reflected in the zoning code restrictions we're talking about. I don't think it's substantial.
Yeah, it's a good way to characterize it.
Is, is, is anybody dissent from that, or? As to whether their proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood.
No.
No, not at all.
No.
No, and the one thing I'd say is, because it hasn't come up yet, that, the fact that, were this not a legally pre-existing two-family residence, this would be an of right change is, I think, a significant factor here. As to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, the board found.
I would almost say this one's a no.
Well, he's the one who wants to make the studio.
Not of substance for me, so no. Not concerned.
Yeah, it's not a concern anyway.
Self-created in the manner that virtually all applications are self-created, but not in the manner that raises concerns for the boards? Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, they're, they're all self-created.
And whether the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to protect and preserve the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Right, well.
I don't really see it as applicable or concerned based on what's being asked, so.
How else are they supposed to put a studio in?
Right.
All right.
I agree.
And the point that you mentioned before, if this were not a two-family, this wouldn't even be here, so.
Right.
Exactly.
I think it's more of a logistical issue.
Right. Okay, so Mr. Miller, I'm sure, I'm sure you heard me say before that normally if a variance is granted, we attach a couple of conditions to it. One of it being payment of all fees that are due before a building permit or a COO is issued. And the second being time limits, apply for a building permit with six months, start construction six months after that, and within twenty-four months after issuing to the permit, complete construction. While we have the ability to extend that in the future, if for whatever reason you're going to be out of the country for three years, whatever, there's, you can, you foresee any problem with that, it would be a good idea to raise it now.
I don't have any problems.
All right.
Just before, before a motion, I just have a question. This is an area variance.
Correct.
Why?
Well, we see it as the, the use of the home occupation use is permitted in this zoning district. And therefore, we evaluate it as an area variance, because the underlying use is permitted. We view the extension of the non-conformity as more of a dimensional restriction in this case. The emphasis being, again, that the home occupation artist live-work studio is a permitted use.
Right, yeah, the, they don't need our permission to have a artist's studio, they need our permission to do construction inside a building that's a prior non-conforming use.
And the, and the courts tend to focus only on the use aspect. For example, parking variances are area variances. Even though it is not a direct dimensional requirement, again, the underlying use is what is the focus.
Okay. I'll make a motion to grant the variance with the conditions, the normal conditions.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and I'll start this side now. Ms. Chacho.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Vekitis.
Aye.
Vekitis, I'm sorry, I said it wrong.
Montosis, by the way.
All right, Mr. Hogg.
Aye.
Aye, oops.
Thanks, that's fine, I got it. I, I will vote aye as well. All right, so the variance carries on a five-zero vote, and as I stated before, we should have that ready for you on Friday. I'll make it a point to get in there by Thursday.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And this, I think we need to open up the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Three.
Motion.
A motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Heather Khan from David Burke Architects, I'm repre, representing Mike Isbell at eight-six-six Walcott Avenue. Variance for the garage application.
Do us one favor. Try to speak into the mic, because I can tell right now, your, what you just said probably didn't get recorded very well.
So to repeat, Heather Khan from David Burke Architects, I'm representing Mike Isbell at eight-six-six Walcott Avenue in the variance request for the garage. Requesting three area variances, one for the rear yard setback, one for the percentage compared to the main structure, and one for the total square footage of accessory buildings. The intent of this garage is to be a two-car garage on the Rector Street-facing side, and then a home occupation on the second half of it. Mike is a photographer, this would be a photography studio for him. It does seem like large variance request, but to put it in perspective, if he had a larger house, if the house was about twenty-four hundred square feet, which would be permitted within both his setbacks and the size of his lot, then we would only need an eight-square-foot variance. We are looking to place it basically where there is an existing shed, use that line along the rear property yard, and basically set it where that is, bring it forward towards Rector Street, reusing the existing curb cut. There's also a very large existing pine tree, it's about thirty feet tall, that he would like to maintain. So that is all what contributed to this, as well as the desire to maintain as much of his yard as possible.
How many stories is this going to be?
It is, would be considered about a story and a half. I have sort of a site elevation to illustrate, there would be some storage on the upper portion, as well as windows on what would be basically the south elevation to allow light into the studio. So this is Mike's current house, it's about, stands about twenty-seven foot tall. This is the closest neighbor's house, the one to his rear yard. And this is the proposed garage building. This fence is right where the property line currently is.
Here's one question I had. What are the, do you know what the dimensions are of the shed that's currently on the property?
Current shed. Ten.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, did you, it's ten by?
It's ten by twenty.
Ten by?
Twenty feet.
Ten by twenty? All right, that was a long pause. Anybody have any questions? Further questions?
I wouldn't mind hearing from the public before, to help me influence some of my thoughts and questions.
Microphone.
Oh, I apologize. I said I like to hear from the public, so I can further my thoughts and come up with any questions I might have.
Yeah, unless I'm missing something, we didn't receive anything by email.
We did, yes, we did.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry. Let me pull that back up.
Received some opposed.
Okay, I'm getting it confused with someone else. Okay, I will read this in. It is from Genevieve Mathis. "We are writing out of concern about the garage workspace proposed by our neighbor, Michael Isbell, eight-six-six Walcott Avenue. Mr. Isbell is requesting a variance to build on the boundary line between our properties. We reside at fifty-one Rector Street. His proposal is for a twenty-two-foot-wide, forty-four-foot-deep, and twenty-six-foot-high structure with a six-point-seven-foot setback from our property line. Mr. Isbell's proposed structure greatly exceeds the size and proximity allowance to our property. Further, the structure that Mr. Isbell proposes would stand on the south side of our property, effectively blocking all sunlight falling on our house and vegetable and wildflower gardens, ruining everything we have spent years planting and tending and enjoying. One of the reasons we bought our house was precisely to have all these things. With Mr. Isbell's structure, our view would change from one of fruit trees, vegetables, flowers, sun, and sunsets, to a shaded barren patch and a big wall. In other words, the impact on our property and quality of life would be tremendous, and we therefore kindly that you ask, ask that you deny his request for variance." And, uh, signed, Genevieve Mathis and Tony Sharon, if I said that right. And do we have, let me just ask, do we have anybody else here who would like to speak on this application? Go ahead. Actually, I should have said this earlier, even though we all know who you are.
My name is Teresa Kraft.
Thank you.
I'm just concerned it's really close to that pine tree that they want to save. And construction, I know that that pine tree's going to suffer. I would hope that they would move it closer, further into the property line, and not close to the back neighbor's property line. I would rethink that tree. Thank you. And I know there are only aspects where a small setback back there, but the other garage was a lot, shed, was a shed, not a garage.
Okay, thank you. Looks like we have somebody else?
We sent a letter.
Okay.
I'm Tony Sharon.
Uh, why don't you get up, move that microphone up, especially, sorry, especially with the mash you got to like.
I'm working with someone who has amino compromise this week, so I'm going to keep it on.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, we got the letter last week, and Michael and Ann are, are, we consider them good friends. We're surprised by the size of the, of the structure. You know, we had a discussion about, you know, working with Michael on a structure that would work for, you know, both of us. But we do need, you know, rules of the road, because this is like wildly outside of, of, um, a building code. I mean, you know, Michael, you know, suggested to us that, you know, I mean, he knows this is outside of code, and, and he's, you know, trying to get as much as he, as he wants, and, so we have to start, you know, some kind of discussion, if, if something like this is going to be built. You know, it's, it's not hyperbolic to suggest that the light, you know, the, the, we have light from the west, that, um, I mean, you know, we have bay windows, we have a beautiful view, I can read a novel, look at a pear tree, we have wildflower gardens, and I, I really don't think that those will still be there if a structure like this is built.
I, I didn't get your name and where you reside, somebody with the property.
I reside on the, in the house, just right, to the right of the.
That's Stella. That's you, okay, got it. So all the way to the right on that picture?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, and, and, you know, the gardens we created, you know, we, we created them for the butterflies and bees, but we have, you know, residents going up and down the street, looking at our wildflowers. In fact, you know, in two thousand eighteen, when Beacon was called like the best, the best town in the, in the country, you know, we, we had a, a Japanese magazine send over a photographer to shoot in Beacon, and they picked our wildflower gardens. So, you know, crew of eight people.
What I'm, I'm saying, there is an existing shed there, and it is set, I mean, one of the reasons why we chose to, they just chose to extend the line of where the existing shed is. So it's basically, the existing shed is six-point-seven feet.
Can you try to speak into the mic, sorry?
The, the existing shed is six-point-seven feet from our property line, and it's a much smaller shed. But already, with that small shed, the, the light effect on our yard, I mean, there's nothing that grows there because of the shed. So if this is extended and made higher, truly, I mean, I'm not exaggerating to say that this will just render everything that we planted shady, gone. And we are perfectly willing to work with Michael, to, to, to make him happy and to keep ourselves happy. I understand that he, his dream is to have a studio, and I would grant him that. I understand that he, his dream is to have a studio, and, and I would grant him that, but this is just, this is much, much too big.
Sorry to ask you this question, but what makes you happy?
My wildflowers and the birds and the bees and the vegetables-
No, but you said you're happy to work with Michael, what makes you happy?
Oh, well, I mean, to, to be within code, I mean, setback from our property line, the proper amount, you know, the height requirements, everything that is city code right now. I mean, he's asking for a variance to go beyond these things.
So you're okay with this structure being moved back such that it doesn't need a rear yard setback variance?
Possibly, I, I would consider it, I mean, I, I would like to keep the dialogue open.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that, and I think that's actually a, a good question, because that's one of the things that really popped into my head, too, is, um, what are we here, we are R1, uh, we are, this is R1 FOT, or pardon me, R110, right? So we've got a fifteen foot rear yard requirement for accessory buildings. If they were building within that framework, we'd be talking about just over eight additional feet forward, forward, but they would, setting aside the footprint issue, they would still be able to build up to the same height that they're proposing.
It would make a big difference in sunlight, if, if it's farther back from our property line.
Yeah, I just want, wanna talk about the size of the building. I mean, you know, I, I walked up and down Rector Street, and the footprint of this, of the building is, is the size of most of the houses. So it's, it's not, it's not a minor thing.
Right, 'cause we would still have the maximum cumulative square footage on the property as an issue.
Right.
So it's just not, not just a matter of pulling it. Dave, what would the structure have to be not to exceed the maximum square, uh, cumulative square footage?
We got the footprint of the house at nine fifty-seven, so forty percent of that is three eighty-three allowed.
So a little bigger than the existing shed, another hundred square feet on the existing shed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What was the footprint again on the existing house?
What was the footprint, footprint again on the existing house?
Nine fifty-seven.
This is... So this accessory building, it has a larger footprint than the house.
Can I just, can I just jump in, please?
It, it, it's...
It is very close, we had the property surveyed in January, the parcel access is slightly off. It is a thousand and eight square feet, and I know that that's very minor, but if we're coming down to numbers, um, the existing footprint without the torches is a thousand and eight square feet. Also, the proposed building is only seventeen and a half feet tall, not twenty-six feet tall. We do realize that there will be some shade implications, um, particularly in the winter. In the summer, I, I have illustrated, given their location, um, and these are, yes, at the height of day, but-
Can you speak more into the mic, sorry, we're getting yelled at.
Sorry, these are the, um, these are the sun angles for, for noon of each of these days, but you can see that in December, this building, yes, will cast shade. However, if there was a fence along the property line, it wouldn't reduce that amount of shade in the winter that much. However, in the summer, the shade line actually falls on Mike's property. So I, I think we can talk about how much that is, but I don't think that the impact on the neighbor's property is quite what they're anticipating. We are looking to mitigate that.
Is the applicant here with you?
He is.
Okay, thank you.
And he's, he's willing to jump in if you have any questions for him specifically.
I don't have any questions, I just wanted to see if he was here.
Has this given any thought to changing the orientation of this and sizing it down a bit?
Yes, we've had a lot of conversations about ways to make this work within, um, what is permitted. Going back to the site plan, it would be hard to accomplish what he's looking to achieve within a much smaller building. He could reduce the garage to a single car garage, um, but he does have two collector cars. Uh, one would be outside, he was hoping to have a place to store them, to protect them, and also just to visually improve the property, not having them outside. Again, there's also this tree that we are looking to protect by, that's the reason for keeping the garage on the line where the existing shed was, because if we start to push it into the property, we will definitely lose that spruce tree, and it's, it's a rather nice specimen. And then again, if we, if we turn it, we're, we're removing a large portion of his yard. So that's how we arrived at this, it, it was, a lot of thought was given, um, to try to make it work within the variance.
Hey, nope. Okay, can you go back in there for a minute, please?
I can, I can do a world, I can do a world, the internet is out. But this isn't our house, this is a main hall, this is a city hall.
Okay, why don't you go sit with Teresa for a minute, and we're gonna go on break here in a few minutes, all right?
Can you fix the internet?
No, I can't, can you go sit down, please? All right, sorry about that.
If he turned, if it was turned, it could go between the trees. You would need, it would still need some downsizing, but you would need less of a variance than you do with this, where it's situated now. Can you hear?
Was, was there a specific question, or?
Well, what, what would be the problem with turning it ninety degrees?
It would, it would totally demolish his backyard, is sort of the reason why, or a good portion of it.
All right, and then, sorry, the question I, I meant to ask before, 'cause I'm thinking, I don't, I don't think you understood what I was asking, but the shed that's there right now, I meant, if you look at the map, aside from the shed, if you look at the shed that is basically directly to the left of the proposed structure, that shed-
That one? Seven and a half by seven and a half feet.
So in other words, about fifty-six square feet?
Fifty-two, to be exact.
Okay, well, let me throw, let me throw one calcul- for one calculation I made, just as a point of discussion. Um, based on our survey, we've got a lot size of thirteen thousand one hundred fifty-four square feet. Overall, we've got a lot coverage restriction of twenty-five percent. If we, if we just ignore that small shed, I'm not saying we should ignore it, but it's a pretty small number, um, you would have about three thousand two hundred ninety square feet that could be built, and if you split that up on a one, one point four basis, that gets you to... If you, if a house was built that was about two thousand three hundred and fifty square feet, that would correspond with a, a maximum allowable accessory building size of nine hundred and forty square feet, and that would be the max that would slide to under a twenty-five percent. Here, we're talking about eleven oh two. So in some ways, I think it's helpful to look at this from the perspective of what could be done as a matter of right on the rationale that it's not like we're going to effectively punish someone for not having a larger house.
Right, and that, that's part of our feeling, is he's not looking to just max out his lot. He's looking to maintain green space, he does have a very large lot for the neighborhood, so yes, proportionately compared to his house, this is a large building, but when you take into account the, the property sizes as you move down Rector Street and the coverage there, I think it's, it's relatively small in a, in a coverage sense.
So am I right that a building that's nine hundred and sixty square feet would be within the allowed, wouldn't need a variance?
No, they would still need a variance right now, because they have it, they don't have a twenty-three hundred fifty square foot footprint on their house. But if they had a, they could build a house that had a twenty-three hundred fifty square foot footprint size, and if they did that, they could build up to nine hundred and forty feet on this accessory building without needing a variance for the size. The, the lot line issue would still be there.
Yes.
Could they do that in that lot?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, no problem, it's, they've got over thirteen thousand square feet.
So the difference between the thousand, the garage square footage that we're proposing, you're proposing here is one thousand one, one thousand seventeen square feet altogether?
The garage and, I'm sorry.
What you're proposing, the building?
The new building.
Yeah, the new building, what is the square footage on that?
Nine hundred and sixty-eight.
That's the square footage?
Of the garage, yes.
Okay, and so, nine hundred and forty, if the house was built, is that what you're saying, David?
Yeah.
So, we're, we're talking about twenty square feet?
Oh, no, we're talking about more than that, we're talking about one hundred and sixty. So in other words, what I'm, what I'm saying is, um, if they maxed out the combined size of the primary structure and the accessory building in a manner so that they wouldn't, they would be under all building size restrictions and lot coverage restrictions, that's what they could do.
If we took our coverage, if, if he wanted to put a giant addition on so that his main building was larger, so that we could do a, by right, building the size, he does have the space to do that, like, we could stay under the twenty-five percent. His house just isn't that big, it doesn't take up that much of the lot.
Right.
Or alternatively, just for purposes of discussion, he could potentially take half of this space as a studio and attach it to his house, and have a freestanding garage in the back, and but for this lot line or the rear yard requirement, he'd be acting within his rights.
By right, right. And the only thing standing in the way of moving it further away and needing less of a rear yard variance is the tree?
The thirty-foot spruce.
Would the owner consider removing the tree in order to?
Absolutely.
You certainly may.
I just wanted to be clear that I've spent nine years living in this house, thinking about this kind of thing daily. Looking at where I live, I live across from the rectory's house at St. Luke's.
We visited.
The yard, if you see where the tree is, the yard area is nice and open. It was great when I had a little kid, 'cause you could play soccer or whatever there, it's an open yard. The question earlier about rotating it, would really put it in the middle of the yard and kinda mess it up. The tree, would I consider it? I don't know that I would, because it's a really big, double-trunked tree. It's very specific, in that area, all the, the trees at St. Luke's are from that older era, big pine trees, so it's sort of a visual thing. Constantly trying to figure this out to make this work. I think it's clear from the drawing issue that Heather showed, the sun is not the issue that some are making out to be, because their house is equally far from the next house, and I go around and look, is that casting a shadow? How would I affect them? It's set back, it's not like up on the front of the property. So the quick question is, would I take the tree down if I had to, I guess, but I'd really rather not. So, I just want, I just wanted to be clear that it's not like I'm not, I'm just trying to put a giant rectangle in my yard. It's really about quality of life for me, 'cause that's also a consideration. And I very much spent time trying to figure out how would this work in here. There's a reason it's not super tall, there's all these considerations that I've been making for years to try to make it work for me. So that's basically it.
I think you, you both used, well, you used messed up, um, I think she used ruined in regards to the orientation being reconfigured as far as your backyard. Could you just articulate what you mean, or either of you mean by ruined or messed up yet?
Yeah, it's a pretty open yard, it's grassy, that big tree, there's an oak tree near the fence line. The driveway and the existing shed are towards the back, and it's a wide open grassy yard, with also a very beautiful symmetrical view of the rectory house and the mountain behind it. So visually, it works as it is. If I was to put that rectangle into the middle of the yard, there'd be no more, uh, area to do, you know, like a kid's zone or whatever a normal yard is. I have a third of an acre plus. Most of it's on nine B, which is also a consideration for me, because it's a very busy street, very noisy street, I'm on a corner. So I'm trying to maintain as much open yard as possible while still accomplishing kind of what I need to accomplish here with the garden.
Like, yeah, I guess, I guess my thought on it is you, you want to achieve a benefit, um, and it seems like you're trying to place the burden on your neighbor while not letting the detriment that comes with that benefit to you affect your property, because...
Oh, okay, that's, I can see how you would have that opinion about it. But what I would say counter that with is that their, adjacent to my fence line is their driveway. It's a big area for their house. The sunny part of their yard, where they could actually guard in all day, is on the other side of the yard. If you look at the way the sun comes, it's over there more. I don't know where in zoning the line is between how much shadow you're allowed to create with your neighbor, but I'm not trying to do any detriment to their property, I'm just trying to put, where my existing driveway is, a building, that's it.
The, the other thing that I'm, I'm just noticing is like, what if you moved it closer to, like, if you moved it and you could push it off the fence, bring it closer to your residence and further away from the rent, if you moved it and-
Shifted it towards Rector Street a little bit?
Shifted it a little bit- Shifted it a little bit towards Rector Street, and then you'd be in between these two trees?
I'm not opposed to that.
That might be, that might be...
I'm not opposed to it. I want it to work, but, you know, like everything else, quality of life is relative, so...
Yeah, absolutely. I think your architect...
I was gonna say, the, the only...
Please, sorry, speak into the mic, thanks.
The, the only problem with that is we start to lose, then, then his parking is only the garage or only the street. Like, we set it back twenty-four feet. We could move it a little bit forward, but we can't move it far enough forward and not remove onsite parking at that driveway area there.
Oh, I see.
Well, what about, all right, Mr. Buckley, correct me if I'm wrong, they can locate legal parking spaces up to five feet away from the, that rear property line. If things were in some way moved around so that you had fifteen feet from that rear property line, you could potentially be parking cars behind the space? Is, is that something that was looked into at all, or?
I've considered that, yeah, sure, certainly, but then that's cars parked close to their yard, you know, I know that, it's fine for me. I have a driveway currently there. It has a funny entrance, because it's big widens as you come into the property. I'm happy to put cars there, but then you have two cars parked along their fence. It's fine with me.
Well, if, if the issue, if the issue is sunlight or views being blocked, might be preferable.
Sure. And I'm not, and I'm not convinced that the light's gonna be the problem. I think that the view is maybe some change is hard, so maybe having a new thing there is difficult to conceive. I think it's a low building, and if I'm eight feet over, which puts me within the fifteen feet, I believe, or eight and a half, eight point three feet over, that's enough room to park a car. And I'm happy to have that be the way it is. I'd have to extend the driveway currently. It's not, you know, it's kind of a, it's not an elevated driveway, but it sort of drops after you go back to, to the half end of it. So I'm happy to do that, if that's something that would make this easier to make happen. It's just that this tree is the, you know, I'm trying to save the tree at the end of the day. But I understand all these concerns, believe me.
If you split it, put a driveway in the back, and on the side deck, have you considered putting an addition there for the studio? You have a whole lot of room on this side of the house.
You mean, connected to my main property?
Yes.
I've considered that, but then it feels like I then would be coming against this thing that we're talking about, where if I make that bigger, then maybe I come back and propose a bigger building as well, and I occupy more footprint of the yard. It's got a very mature property. All the trees are old, there's like Japanese cherry trees. It's a very mature property. I don't know how long it was landscaped, but it's been there like probably fifty years. So as little as I can, you don't see that on this representation, but there are a lot of trees in that yard. So as little as I can do to mess that up, I guess, is a better term, but, yeah, it's a consideration. I could do that, I suppose, but currently, this would be easier for me. This would make more sense for me. And I'm happy, if I'm within that fifteen feet and it's shrunken down a little bit to fit in between those trees, I think that would probably work. And I could park back there, because I know I have to have two, two lot, two parking spaces for the single-family home, if I'm not mistaken. So, that would work for me.
Would you be willing to reconfigure it and come back?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Well, 'cause I mean, I'll just throw this out from, I can only speak for myself, but for where I'm sitting, as a nor, as a general proposition, we, my view is that if someone is replacing an accessory building that's already on the law, already on the property, that's in a non-conforming location, um, barring some significant countervailing consideration, we gotta just let them put it in the same place. Now, going up significantly higher and since you're gonna be closer to the line than you're supposed to be, that couldn't be a countervailing consideration. If that consideration isn't there, personally, I'm not super concerned about the square footage thing. I mean, it's a little over what would be allowed as a matter of right, even if you built the largest house you could, but it's not very much over, and because we've got a twenty-five percent lot coverage restriction in the first place, maybe it doesn't make that big of a difference in the grand scheme of things.
Yeah. I mean, I feel like, based on that math, the twenty-five percent math, you said thirteen thousand, that cumulatively's gotta be over twenty-five, I don't, maybe it's over three thousand square feet or something like that.
About thirty-three hundred, yeah.
And I'm talking about ending up with around, under two thousand, so in that sense...
And that's why I'm saying, I don't think that really strikes me as that big of a deal overall.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's hear from your neighbor again, and then...
Thank you.
Just wanna mention something regarding the sunlight, and you can tell how important this is to me. If you can tell on the little, the gray, the gray rectangle is the proposed building, but within that gray rectangle, the existing shed is, is in the, in the corner there. I'm not sure how high that existing structure is, but it does already throw significant shade on our garden regardless of whether it's summer or winter, and we cannot plant anything there. So we already have a bare patch there, which we have taken into consideration with our gardening. So, so if that existing structure is then increased to the size of the gray rectangle, it, it really doubles the amount of shade that we have. And it's not just our driveway. We have wildflowers. We have, very close to Rector Street, we have our driveway. It's basically one car length, and then beyond that is all wildflowers and our vegetables, and we have fruit trees, and they would be severely impacted. Now, I will say that I do not want Michael to have to remove that beautiful tree. I mean, the trees are absolutely gorgeous, and that would be a detriment, I think, to everybody's view. I do not want that to happen. I, you know, I want my sunlight, we bought the property for the reason of gardening and fruit trees and all these things, and, and if there is a structure there, it will impact our...
I was gonna say, that the, you know, the, the sun map at, you know, the optimal moment, you know, at noon, it may be covered, but the sun starts to move, and then there's, and then there's no sun.
Right.
So it's, it's not, you know, that, that sun map is not accurate at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so it sounds like, if I'm reading this or hearing this correctly, we, we wanna adjourn this to the next meeting, give the applicant a chance to consider some plan changes, and, and on top of that, while I did drive by there, take a look, I definitely was not looking at this from the perspective of what would the light impact be on that property. It might be good to take a look with that consideration in mind. Does anyone?
Motion.
Well, you were gonna say something.
I thought you were just extending it.
I have to put out my point of view. My initial reaction is, I think this is quite substantial. I have, I do have a concern...
Microphone?
I do have a concern with the cumulative square footage. I do have a concern with how it approaches on the neighbors. I, I think this is quite substantial. I mean, no disrespect to anyone. I'm not looking to solve your problem, I'm looking to evaluate the application, and I am quite concerned with this application from the point of view of the neighborhood, the neighbors, and how substantial this is. So I just wanna throw that out there. So if you do come back next month, I would like to definitely see something that addresses all of that and mitigates those concerns.
Okay. Thank you. And if anybody else has anything they wanted to throw out there, now would be a good time. If not, that's fine, too.
I just wanna ask a question about if, if they did not need a rear yard variance, and they moved, they moved the, the structure so that it was by rights allowable, we wouldn't have any, would, would there still be a problem with the way the light is for the neighbor? Because I don't know that the next-door neighbor really has the duty to make sure, as long as they're doing something by right, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So if, would it still, that, that's the question that I'm gonna have next month. Is it still gonna be a problem for your garden, even if they move it seven more feet?
You're saying, so right now, it's six point seven feet, or let's say seven feet from our property line and the, and the...
It's eight point three.
Six point seven.
Six point seven. I think eight point three is what they need.
To add, add on, yeah, add on...
Oh, they need, I'm wasting my time reading this stupid thing.
No, it would not be as much of a problem, ideally, I, for me personally, it wouldn't be a structure there at all. But, you know, I can't tell him what to do and what not to do. But, but, you know, variances exist for, you know, or, or codes exist for people's properties, and, and I think that this is greatly exceeds any code that is allowable in a residential area in Beacon for us.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I still have a problem with the lot coverage. I still have a problem with the lot, the amount of lot coverage and the location. There seems like there's, within the boundaries that are buildable on that lot, there still seems to be a lot of area. It may be inconvenient, but it does exist.
It does. As far as the area, I, I mean, I do feel like he would be being punished for not having a larger house or not fully maximizing his property, which, if green space and trees are like a driver for important environmental elements, that's kind of a, a two-way street. Also, just, just...
But if you're covering the lot more, green space is, really doesn't appear to be a concern.
I'm just saying, overall square footage, if we make the house bigger so that this is a permitted size, or very close to a permitted size, we're just building... He, he could by right build a much larger building and then have a garage that is almost this large by right, which would just be maximizing a lot unnecessarily. And then the other item is we, we are taking into account the neighbor and shade. One way we could reduce the square footage and move the building into his by right area is to move the studio upstairs, which would create a two-story building, which would then cast a larger shadow. So we, we can go back and look at this, but I don't think that we're going to just be able to completely solve the neighbor's problem by a right, by right solution. So I, I would ask that the board would consider the, the area footprint variance, if we can, if we can fix the side yard, that they would consider granting a larger building then, is permitted when you go through those calculations.
Okay, thank you. Unless somebody has anything further, do we wanna make a motion here?
Not me.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the April meeting.
All right, motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we will see you next month, and before we move on to the next one, can we take about a three-minute break here? Got some business to attend to. All right.
So this goes with this and this.
Okay, so, do we, I think we need a motion to open our review session here?
Motion to open the review session?
Secret review. Secret review, yeah.
Secret review.
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Montos, motion? I second. We all aye'd.
All right, Mr. Palmer.
Gee, Mr. Chairman. All right, well, it's been a long time since we got to see y'all face to face. Hope everybody's done well. Some new faces, for the benefit of the record and for the board. My name is Taylor Palmer. I'm a partner with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader. We're here on behalf of the applicant this evening. Now that you've dealt with the hard work, we're here with the easy work. Of course, I'm a little bit kidding. Tonight, I am joined by the project architect, R.A. Siegel Architect. We are also joined by Richard DeAndrea of Collier's Engineering Design. He's our traffic and parking consultant on the project. We are joined by the applicant as well and owner Gavin Hecker. Just for your purposes, Deborah Adenson is our landscape designer, and we also have Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design here in Beacon, as well as our project engineer. I know there's a lot about this project, and I wanna just, if the chairman sees fit, just give the board a bit of a background, just about where we are. You know, obviously, it's literally out up the street, but just to give you a sense of what we're proposing, where we're located, and then let Rich handle some more of the visual aspects of it. Up on the board, before you, you have the site plan, but Rich has a nice number of visuals to help us kinda contextualize what we're looking to do on the property. As the chairman mentioned, we are here in connection with a seeker review, so this is sort of a, an interesting referral to your board as distinct from a formal variance application. Ultimately, one of the considerations would be a parking variance, and I'll get into that in a moment, but today, we're here as a involved agency. Your board's an involved agency in the environmental review process that the planning board is running as the lead agency. So by way of brief background, the property consists of a through lot that has frontages on Walcott Avenue and Beekman Street, so it is just up the road or down the road, I guess, depending which way you go, Walcott or Beekman, from here to City Hall. And it was, the property's previously, or has been presently improved by the historic church, as well as the rectory and the cemetery. It was collectively referred to as the Reformed Church Beacon. And it's understanding that the church actually had a capacity of three hundred and thirty-six people, so the pews and the capacity there, which will be relevant in a moment as it relates to a particular exception that's provided in the zoning code. The property's in the R-140, one-family residence district, and it's also in the historic district overlay, which in a minute relates to the uses that are permitted on the property and those that we're proposing on the site. And that also relates to the special permit application, but pending right now before the planning board. So as, as more detailed in our detailed submission dated February twenty-second, we did refine the program that is before you with the planning board over a long period of time. The applicant originally appeared back in July of last year in connection with the application. We've spent a lot of months working with them, the board's consultants, who, some of whom are here this evening to try and reduce down the scope of the development proposal. The overall adaptive reuse of this property, because again, it's the historic church that's being adapted very used, the parsonage itself, which again, R.A. will touch on, just so you can see some visuals of what we're doing, is being repurposed as a hotel. So the existing rectory is gonna be converted into a two-and-a-half-story, thirty-room hotel with thirty-two off-street parking spaces. So that's one more than was in our submission to you. We did some rejiggering of the site plan, which you'll see before you. For example, the arch with the circle driveway, which the planning board referred to your board as being a negative, has now been removed. We have a number of important traffic and circulation improvements that we've added. We're also renovating the church into an accessory space that includes a conference center, which could have events, as well as dining facilities and a cafe, restaurant, bar. And we are also restoring the cemetery, so we will also be developing a path down to Beekman. As you may know, the adjoining properties, both River Ridge and Weston Lofts, both have connections down to Beekman, and ours will be one and the same. So while the applicant previously proposed the, the maximum capacity, now you're, we're gonna speak specifically to these, these items because they're important. You know, part of what we're here to discuss, of course, is the, the character of the development, the size and scale and scope, and of course, the parking, which are all secret considerations before the board and, and a referral to you as the involved agency. The original proposal had a maximum capacity. Now, it's, again, limited events, typically on a Friday or a Saturday, to four hundred and twenty people for a large event. So that was a, a large number, and it has been significantly scaled back. That now, the maximum is three hundred and fifty people. That's people working at the site, that's people visiting the property, that's shared uses between those staying in the hotel and those staying, or those utilizing the event space, some items that we'll get into in just a moment. So notwithstanding that there are occasional larger weekend events, we actually anticipate ranges between a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred people at these larger events. So there will be, again, occasional large events that might have up to three hundred and fifty people, but generally speaking, the events will be smaller. Along that same line, it's not seven days a week that we're talking about for these, these larger events. Again, we're limiting it to those weekend scopes. The hotel itself will run three sixty-five, seven days a week, as you would at the Roundhouse or otherwise here in Beacon. Having gotten married at the Roundhouse, I certainly can tell you, there aren't enough facilities to have a whole wedding party stay, I guess, depending on the size of your wedding, of course. It's gotta ship them off to Fiskville, so let's keep them here in Beacon. The dining facilities that I mentioned will be located in that historic church, and they will serve as a reception for guests at the hotel. Will also offer breakfast, lunch, and dinner to hotel guests, and will operate as a hotel bar and accessory use for the program. The uses were determined to be, as the accessory uses and the hotel use were determined to be permitted by the building inspector, so we had an original determination from Mr. Buckley on that particular use. And then we came back to Mr. Buckley again because we couldn't get enough, and we asked him to make a determination on the parking. So that is again, part of our secret discussion, and he issued a determination on March 1st regarding our parking proposal. So in a, in a minute, Rich will help with the visuals because again, that's a lot easier, I think, to digest than the tailor math that you're about to get, but I'm going to try and, I'm going to try and stay in my lane and, and hopefully get, you know, a good understanding of what we're, we're working with. Importantly, Rich will also touch on the fact that it's not just, you know, parking variance or otherwise we're needing. We are implementing a traffic and parking management plan. That's going to be having, you know, additional valets and other parking. That's going to be coordinating with off-site, private, and in some instances, it could be public parking areas. That's going to be utilizing brochures and flyers to get people to park at Beekman or take the train to come to our venue. A lot of things that help mitigate or reduce potential, any potential parking impacts. But also, as Rich will discuss, it's not expected as, as currently proposed to have any significant environmental impact, notwithstanding again, sort of the numerical value that I'll get to now. So again, as this is tailor math, the project proposes 32 off-street parking spaces. So the site layout, as you can see, has 32 off-street parking spaces today. Again, this is a historic church. It had 300-plus pews and, and people attending it for weddings or other events traditionally. So this is typically, generally consistent with the uses that have been on the site, of course, the hotel being a, a increase in that, in that sort of that, that change. We are now, of course, circled by new residential development, the West End Lofts, River Ridge, you've got the View at the bottom of the hill, and now Ferry Landing, and of course, you have Hammond Plaza. So you have a lot of new development in the area, and hopefully, this will be a welcomed addition to this end of, of Main Street where, you know, again, you're, you're close to Main Street, but you're, you're, you're starting to head down to the train station. Importantly, there's a combination of public parking lots in other areas, whether it's Beekman, the train station, some existing public and private parking lots that will be utilized, as I sort of call it, the layer cake. You know, in case one layer fails, we're trying to create other layers that could back up as far as additional parking options. For example, the city is currently implementing new, or is working with its Main Street Parking Committee to potentially develop new parking areas in the city. Whether it's garages or otherwise, that's currently being evaluated. Knowing that's not here now, can't take credit for the future, we're also planning for, God forbid, one of those sites that currently permits public parking becomes unavailable because of development or otherwise. So we're taking all of that account, putting it in the blender to see what come, you know, to make sure that what comes out is still not causing any impacts to the surrounding areas, ensures that it doesn't impact the folks at River Ridge by keeping them out of their developments, keeps them out of the residential neighborhoods, you know, again, across Walcott, up the hill. But hey, if it's a possibility that folks might be searching for parking, we're finding ways and putting it into our plan to ensure that they don't negatively have those impacts. So I've been avoiding this math. I can't avoid it anymore. I've got to get to it. So the building inspector confirmed that as an existing non-conforming use, the church itself had 69, was required to have had 69 total parking spaces. So the code provides what we, what I in short call the 1964 exception, which again, if you had to use, pre-exist the code in 1964, then they allow you, the code allows you to have a certain number of parking spaces that, that, that might exceed that, that, the time would have been required. So in our case, a 25% increase over what was permitted in 1969 was 86 total parking spaces. So as it stands, if we, if we, if the development proposal, the combination of uses was 80, required only 86 or fewer spaces, no variance would be necessary at all. It would be, to call it a permitted use is, is accurate. The uses are not what's at issue here. It's the, how the parking is, is calculated. So as I do, I tried to make a creative request to Mr. Buckley, one of, I guess, first in impression. He denied me. Rightfully so, I think, in this case, because he's, the focus is more specific and directed to the code itself, the hard, the hard facts. So while we were doing our best to help show where we can find parking off-site, where we can find, you know, and, and show how we mitigate our, our concerns, that's of no concern to Mr. Buckley. He has a fine, you know, a direct rule and has to tell you what the parking relief would be required. So Mr. Buckley determined that we require for the overall project as designed, all uses accessory to the maximum event, not, not the typical daily event, but the maximum event, 350 maximum people is 136 parking spaces. So again, we're grandfathered, so to speak, the, the 1964 exception would have gotten us up to 86, but the project requires 136.
You said if you were grandfathered, right?
So that's a great question. That's a great question. So if, if the use was reduced down to a, the number of people that attended the maximum events was reduced down, that number would then, we wouldn't require a parking variance from your board. But because we exceed that, our 350 maximum persons for those specific events, we require a parking variance.
How would you guarantee that hypothetical?
How would we guarantee that we would have fewer than 350 people?
Yeah.
Also, no, we're, so we're before you because we are requesting at the planning board, maximum events of up to 350 people.
Right.
So we only provide 32 off-street parking spaces.
No, I got it. I get.
Right. So we require a variance.
I'm trying to understand why you're arguing the 136 that Mr. Buckley is saying.
So Mr. Buckley requires that we have 136 spaces. We are providing 32, so the variance that we would ultimately be seeking from you is 104.
Got it.
So what we, what we're, what we're trying to tease out of all of that is that while 104 spaces is, is, is the variance that we're seeking, the real difference in our mind is, is the number 18. And I say that number because, and Drew will probably point to the distinction here, which Mr. Buckley has already confirmed in his calculation, that is the difference between what is permitted as the 1964 exception, reducing, of course, the number that we actually provide off-street and the difference thereof.
But I go back to why do you say the 1964 should apply to you?
Yeah, Montos, I'm sorry. Taylor is confusing, no offense, Taylor.
Sure.
Much respect. I think is, is trying to get the board to see lower numbers. This board needs to keep in mind that the variance that will come to you is for 104. So Taylor's throwing a lot of numbers.
Yep.
Focus on 104 and, and, you know, the 1964 exception in the code does not apply. Dave Buckley has already determined that. So, you know, I'll let Taylor finish his speech, but I want, I don't want anyone to be confused. The number that matters is 104 for our purposes.
Thank you. Exactly. No questions. Thank you.
And just a point of clarification, the 1964 exception would apply, and the applicant could utilize the 1964 exception if the uses required fewer, had fewer people attending events. So if the maximum capacity for an event was only 250, then again, that exception would apply to the project, and we wouldn't be before you for variance. But because we're seeking to have larger events, we are before you, as Drew correctly mentions, for 104 spaces. I'm just trying to provide the board with some illustrative arguments that the applicant made with respect to realities versus what the code requires. So the bright line rules, Drew correctly states, is 104 spaces. So rather than bog us specifically in the math, I think what's important for this project is, this is a historic preservation effort. The applicant is preserving a historic church. We have to look at it too for what the nature of this application is. We're not proposing to develop parking spaces in the middle of, of, you know, in front of the church, along the side to River Ridge neighbors. We're being, we're accommodating those considerations. So we're not utilizing or maximizing the development of the site where we might otherwise be able to put these parking spaces and might otherwise meet certain requirements that we're not meeting through their code. So with that, I will ask R.A., excuse me, I'll ask Gavin just to give you a bit about himself and their connection to the property, because those are things that are part of this process. You know, it's the secret process. It's the community impact. We're preserving a church. We're, you know, we're, we're fixing up a cemetery. We're, we're taking on something that the River Ridge developers didn't, that West End Loft said, no thanks. That down the hill said, no thanks. Nobody wanted the problem. We're, we're trying to create a, you know, a, a, a unique development and, and doing all the things necessary to try and mitigate potential impacts to that site. So the numerical 104, all I'm trying to do is to sort of say that the number doesn't necessarily, the devil's in the details, and we're working that out through what available off-street parking could otherwise satisfy these needs.
Thanks, Taylor. My name's Gavin Hecker, and I'm here as a partner in this project with one of our other partners is here as well. And I guess Taylor pretty much said everything there. I just wanted to give you a little bit of, more of an introduction of who we are and, and our background. We, we came to this, as Taylor was saying, this, this project requires the preservation of this historic church. And with that in mind, the, the current or not, the past use of the church by the Reformed Church of Beacon was not sustainable. And, and part of that reason was because they didn't have enough people attending services to maintain their congregation. So they decided to sell the church. When they decided to sell the church, they, they had several people that were interested in it, and we had, and they had us go ahead and tell them what we planned to use it for, and this is exactly why we're here. They wanted the use that we intend to use it for, and traditionally, churches that no longer have their congregations there anymore are often turned into another space for people to congregate. So having said that, Lauren and I are, come from a background of, of the nonprofit arts world. We want to maintain the church as a cultural center and with that, keep the current capacity that currently exists for it. We both are, live in the community. We are collaborating with the community. I live a, a seven-minute walk from the church. I'm there almost every day now. And everybody we're working with is, is pretty much a resident of Beacon or has a close association with us, and they want to see this as a cultural center. And with that, I'll, I'll move on. I just wanted to make that introduction. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm R.A. Siegel. I'm the architect for the project. So Taylor covered a lot of the information, but I just wanted to give you a little flavor about what we're doing with the buildings. So these are images of the existing historic church. It, it's mainly interior work that doesn't affect the outside. There, there's going to be a new entrance door to the cafe on, on this little north wing of the building. And then there's going to be a new deck off of the cafe in, in the back of the church, so that, that wouldn't be seen from the street. But, you know, apart from that, everything on the church building is on the interior. Then we're, we're also adaptively reusing the existing rectory building. And that, that's going to be where the hotel is. We're, we're going to be adding to, to that building, to the rear, and creating, you know, that 30-room hotel building. The detailing of the addition is similar to, to the existing building, similar materials. The siding would match what's existing. It would be over a brick foundation. And, and then in the front, we'd also have this brick planter that's tied into the foundation that, that would sort of screen the, the required handicap ramp up to the hotel entrance. I'm going to just give you a couple of other views here. You can see it from a couple of sides, but, but, you know, so basically, we're just trying to extend the, the same design and architectural features as the original building. And, you know, so I just wanted to give you that little background on what we're doing with the buildings.
Just, I'm just buying time for Rich to plug his toggle in so he can do his quick presentation. But I'd make just two, two notes now that I've made everybody's brain hurt. Lastly, but leastly, not leastly, we did speak to folks from, while we're not in the public hearing process either tonight or at the planning board, we have made initial communications because, again, we're their neighbors and we're trying to make sure that their voices are heard both through our landscaping or other components of the application. So we have met with folks from River Ridge and from West End Lofts, and we do actually have letters of support that would be incorporated into any future submission when it relates to this application. So we're, we're, we're not going darkly into the night. We are trying to, to make this a, a project that, that is embraced by not only its immediate neighbors, but the community otherwise. So with that, buying time from Rich, he's got the toggle in.
Good evening. Just by way of an introduction, Rich DeAndrea from Colliers Engineering and Design. We, I guess Taylor, Taylor mentioned we were the traffic and parking consultant, or are the traffic and parking consultant for this project. So I'm going to run through a brief presentation just to give you guys all an idea of a lot of the information that was submitted to you in our traffic study and in the draft traffic and parking management plan that we provided. The reason it was a draft is we're still in the process of developing that with the applicant and some of the, some of the things that actually we can update you on as I go through this. So I think we've all been through the, the site location. We have a pretty good idea of where it is. What I would like to, sorry, just point out is a couple of locations that we will be, I'm sorry, I had it showing that. Looking to potentially park some of the people. So we have the Tompkins Firehouse Lot that's in this location right here, not too far from the site. We're also looking at potentially using, utilizing parking within Municipal Plaza Lot here at City Hall. There's on-street parking along Beekman Street that's usually fairly available, and I'll get into some of the, the, the numbers that we've collected for those locations. Obviously, the Beacon Train Station, a little further away, but that's another location that parking has been identified. And I'll get into some of that as we go through, but that's just the general overview of the, the, the more readily available parking areas that are nearby. We talked about the site plan a little bit. One of the things that, just to mention is, you know, the onsite circulation as it's planned right now, provides a, a two-way driveway where the existing driveway is today. There may be some improvements to that driveway, which we're showing right now. We're waiting for some input from the New York State Transportation, Department of Transportation on the configuration of that driveway. From there, we have parking in the back and a one-way exit driveway, only a driveway at the north end. There's an existing curb cut at that location today. It's basically just a gravel driveway today, but we would be upgrading that for, for exiting movements. This is just a more zoomed-in view of, of that plan. We've talked about the, the project description. Not much more to add to this, to that at this point, so I'm just going to breeze through that. So Taylor got into some of the numbers on the, on the code requirements for the parking. The hotel, 31 spaces. We have 30 rooms there plus one, one planned employee at any one time. The cafes, anticipated to be 50 seats or 50 patrons, so 17 spaces there. And then our 350-person, a maximum-size event would be another 88 parking spaces. So totaling 136 spaces. We talked about, we're providing 32 spaces onsite. The total variance is 104. The one thing that Taylor didn't really get into is the, the anticipated use of the cafe during the event times. So during events, the cafe would only be there to support the event. And it would theoretically be a non-simultaneous use. So you wouldn't have people that aren't attending the event at the cafe at the same time. So that, based on that, in my mind, the real parking deficiency that we have here is 87 spaces, not the 104 that the variance is for.
Do you just like to point out that in the submission, it does say that the cafe is going to be open to the public?
Yes, agreed. And the cafe will be open to the public. However, when there's an event going on, there, the cafe will not have anyone outside of the event is how the, they plan to operate the, the cafe. So that's just, you know, in my mind, the 87 spaces is the number, understanding that your board needs to look at the 104, right? So knowing that, that we have to accommodate these parking spaces out above the 32 that we're providing onsite somewhere, we looked at the available parking in the area. And, and obviously, this is, there's a lot going on in this figure that it's a little hard to see, but we have the Tompkins Lot, which as part of our traffic study, we were asked to provide a conceptual layout for, because if you go over there today, it's just a gravel or grass lot and no scribed parking. So we provided a conceptual layout. We identified you could get about 68 parking spaces in that lot. We identified in the Municipal Plaza. that lot. We identified in the Municipal Plaza Lot, there's about 76 parking spaces here today that aren't marked for city or police parking, so that are publicly available. There's 72 spaces along Beacon Street. And the other thing that's kind of new, that has developed in the last week or so, is the applicant is looking at entertaining, or entering into an agreement with the Riverview Funeral Home to obtain some, the use of their parking when they have available parking, which can be used, legalized on the weekends for these larger events and things like that. We also identified some of the more remote parking locations.
Can I ask you a question before you continue?
Absolutely.
Have you done a study of those?
I'm going to get into that.
Do you have a question?
I'm assuming you're asking about the number of vehicles parked there at different times of the day.
And then can you give me tomorrow's lotto number?
[laughing]
That's pretty good.
Yeah. It's my next slide, actually.
Okay, thank you.
So, just, we also...
13-7.
[laughing] We looked at, we also looked at the Cross Street Lot, along Main Street, the Cliff Lot, the Beacon Center Lot. And then, obviously, we didn't really get into the actual parking availability in the Beacon Train Station Lot. But we did do some quick observations of that, and I can discuss that a little bit further. So what we did to identify what parking is actually available today is, we went out there in September and November of this past year, to identify what's the parking utilization in these area lots during the times that we think that we're going to be having these events, right? And what you can see from this is basically during, on a typical Friday, which we think, you know, or a Saturday, when we think we would have these largest of the events, we have anywhere between 160 and 240 spaces available in these different area lots. And again, that takes into account, some of those are more remote locations at Cross, at the Cross Street Lot, the Cliff Lot, and the Beacon Center, which weren't, were more heavily utilized, obviously, because they're along Main Street. But the locations that are closer to the site, along Tompkins, at the Tompkins Lot, at the Municipal Plaza Lot here, and along Beacon Street, were more free at those times. We didn't look at, obviously, the Riverview Funeral Home at all, because that has just materialized, and we would, I think, the anticipation is that would only be usable when they're not having, they don't have something else going on at that location. Just wanted to touch on some of the connectivity to these locations where the parking is. We mentioned that there's existing pathways between Beacon Street and Walcott Avenue today, along Ferry Street, and between the West End Lofts here. We're also going to be providing that same similar connection to Beacon Street to make this readily available. We estimate that to be a three to five-minute walk, depending on where you are, along Beacon Street. The Municipal Plaza to the site is about four, four-and-a-half-minute walk. Tompkins Lot, two to three-minute walk. So all those are fairly readily close to here. The other locations are more like seven to eight minutes walking, but seem to be fairly reasonable. Obviously, the Beacon Train Station, it's a larger hill. People may not want to walk up that hill. But if, the intent is that we would maybe directing people to park in certain locations, and if that's one of the locations that we think that would be helpful. We're also talking about trying to provide people coming to the project, information about public transportation, too, as that may be an option. So we mentioned the traffic and parking management plan. So this plan is, again, in draft form at this time, but we're working through how we can, we can manage the traffic during these larger events, where we anticipate we may have pickups, drop-offs happening on the site itself. And also, how can we get people to park in locations that we believe that there's going to be available parking, and where we really kind of want them to be parking? So this figure that I have on the board right now is what we anticipate for the circulation at the moment. Again, some of this is in the works. We may look at reversing the circulation of this. But this is basically for the management of the traffic on the site, for pickups, drop-offs, and knowing that there's no parking for the events on the site. So we would have attendance there to make sure that people do not try to park in those locations. The other pieces of the traffic and parking management plan are really disseminating information to attendees. How are we going to do that? Via the website? We could provide them information electronically if they're for a ticketed event, through representatives or coordinators of the non-ticketed events. Even handouts on the day of the event by attendance in the parking lot could be utilized, say, okay, this is where you should go to park. We've mentioned in the traffic and parking management plan, the use of shuttles. That's more geared towards, like, if you're having a wedding, you may have people staying in an off-site hotel, like Taylor mentioned. They could be shuttled over to the location. And we're, we talked about the pedestrian access, but we're also providing bicycle parking on the site to try and entice people to come via other modes of transportation. Taylor did mention some of the other Main Street Access Committee parking recommendations, just kind of pointing those out. Just two potential things here about the Beacon Center Lot, and additional parking there, and maybe some parking along Walcott Avenue that were identified. Another thing that we're really taking account for in our study, but that may be something in the future. The other thing Taylor mentioned that would be potentially impacting the parking could be something happening in the Municipal Plaza Lot that may be a future development, that may take away some parking. There's also, we understand there's plans for the Tompkins Firehouse to do some kind of addition to their firehouse there that may reduce some of the parking that's available in the Tompkins Lot. So that's something else that we're considering as we work through this. And the last piece of this is, Taylor did mention, you know, we could potentially provide parking in other locations, not something on the site that we really want to do, because, again, we're trying to, it's a historic preservation. But there are locations that we have identified that could potentially provide some additional parking, and that's what's kind of shown on these figures. But really, we're just trying to show that we could go that route, but because it's a historical preservation project, is a key component of this, it's not an ideal solution. We don't see it. So. And I think the only thing I didn't really talk about was the traffic portion of this. So I'll just touch on it briefly, was, so our traffic study, we took into account the traffic that's in the area. We studied intersections up and down Walcott Avenue, from Ver Plank down to the south, the south end of South Avenue, and provided an analysis of both typical conditions and event conditions under our build scenario. It's been reviewed by the city's traffic consultant. Generally, we don't have any significant impacts shown in that analysis. It's still being reviewed by the Department of Transportation. And your city's traffic consultant has also asked us to provide a sensitivity analysis to go along with our next submission, which we will be providing. So there's some more information to come on that end.
So if you want, we can wait for the chairman to return. But that generally concludes our presentation. Sorry, there's a lot there. We have been with the planning board for quite some time. So hopefully, that gave you a little bit of a feel about what we've been working on, and some of the updates that we've been trying to include. But again, we're in a historic, you know, historic district overlay zone, and the goal here is to really bring new life to the church while keeping it and preserving its historic value. But we'll certainly wait for Mr. Jensen to return.
Am I clear on what the ask is here? Is this just informative for us, or are they looking for a rendering of opinion, or?
Yeah, so the planning board is, this has been referred to this board for an opinion on the, on Seeker, specifically with respect to the parking. So the planning board is looking for a memo from this board back to them on your thoughts and concerns on the project, but specifically the parking, because that's where we're going to have, you know, a decision to make when this eventually comes before this board. So things to consider, you know, we're not going through the five-factor test, but think about it for environmental impact purposes. So think of that fourth factor. Are there any environmental concerns that this parking variance would raise, that you would like answers to, or clarification on? I think community impact from this parking variance can also go to Seeker as well. So I think those, you know, in terms of, okay, how does the ZBA look at this? I think you're looking at community impact. You're looking at, you know, how this will impact the environment. And the goal is to put together a memo back to the planning board with our thoughts, questions, and concerns.
I apologize if I missed something in the first one minute, but I did have two questions I wanted to...
Please.
...to the applicant.
Yeah, we were just speaking about the board's, the objective tonight, that it's not the typical five-factor review. It's looking at whether the project would have a significantly, potentially significant environmental impact. And of course, our submission is that through mitigation measures, the traffic reports, the management programs, and the other off-site review, that it wouldn't have a potentially significant environmental impact.
So what started the conversation was, I asked the question, what is the expectation of the board tonight? Is it to render an opinion on this, and Drew clarified?
And much, I would say, there's no expectation tonight. The board should take its time, ask questions, ask for more information. There is no expectation from the planning board that you will have a memo back to them, you know, for their review. I think they're meeting pass, right, John? Or their review, whatever. They're meeting this month or next month. So there is no rush to have a product tonight.
I'd just like to point out to the board that you do have the city planner here tonight, John Clark, who you may want, if you have some questions you may want, I will also ask him.
My two questions were just this. First of all, with regard to Riverview Funeral Home, if an arrangement was being made with them for parking, would this involve, like, some sort of an easement, or something that's enforceable going forward in the future?
Yes, it would be typically a license agreement, or, you know, a lease agreement. As I understand it, and we have, we're working out the logistics of it, but I understand that this funeral home does not typically have evening wakes or other events. They're typically during the day, so it's actually a perfect, well, perfect is a non-fair word, but it's a better, I would, most of the wakes that I've attended have usually been in the evening hours. This particular funeral home doesn't do that. We have to get more information to confirm all of that. But yes, it would be a license agreement, and it would be, you know, when they're not, when there wouldn't be a conflict, it would be open to our use. But we understand that the hours of our evening events, or events on the weekends, would typically be in the evening hours. Some may be, you know, a bit earlier. But the idea here is the layer cake concept, where we're not just looking only at the publicly available lots. We're still in discussions with other owners as well, so that if something were, they're paving their parking lot, and we can't use it, then, you know, okay, call up Lot B, or redirect traffic to these publicly available lots utilizing our traffic management plan.
Okay, because, just to state the obvious, parking solutions that could disappear after five years, from a planning perspective, are not really solutions.
Exactly. So we have to anticipate just that, the same way as Mr. Clark has mentioned during, at the planning board meetings, that we, you know, and Mr. D'Andrea mentioned tonight, you know, we're looking to the future and seeing that there could be more opportunity, but we aren't taking credit for that in our analysis. We're not saying, we're just highlighting, you know, some of those points. You know, it's the converse of your point, Mr. Jensen, which is that there could be something, that funeral home could become a, you know, a, I don't know, an apartment building, or something else where that may not be available to us. But it is a license agreement, so it wouldn't be in perpetuity, it would be as long as the events here. And the same could be true. I don't know that this event, the events will always be 350. They could be less. But again, we're not, we're not here to kind of go through that. We're trying to find as many other solutions. Our traffic and parking report identifies that there is availability to satisfy our needs, but because of all of the potential development or otherwise for those lots, we have to find multiple ways to try and satisfy that. And that's what our traffic management plan does, is kind of smatter. So it's, I call it the public-private partnership, not to be confused with the city giving us something, and, you know, us in return. It's, we're trying to utilize what's available, plus finding other ways to help ensure we don't have any impacts.
The other thing may be more of a question for Drew, and you frankly may not know off the top of your...
Sorry.
Maybe more of a question for Drew, and you may not really know off the top of your head. But hypothetically speaking, in the future, if there's a parking variance request in front of us, and part of the rationale of approving it is, well, for example, while an event is going on, the restaurant's not going to allow people to attend who are not associated with the event, or during certain days of the week, on weekdays, et cetera, events are not going to exceed a certain size, so effectively an occupancy limit on the building that's tied to time of day. Do we have the ability, and/or would it be appropriate, to be using these as restrictions or conditions that are attached to the variance?
Yes, that's definitely something that could be explored when this variance comes to us.
Okay.
You know, those types of conditions, we can discuss and see how practical they are for that application, but that conversation can be had.
I think those would be pertinent considerations, just based on what I've seen so far.
Because again, yeah, we can't request a variance really from you for two days of the week, you know, or we would be before you with that more narrowly focused ideal. It's an every, you know, that's unfortunately how we can condition or leave. The planning board at some future date may condition hours of operation, you know, the typical time, place, and manner restrictions associated with the program.
Yeah, but for what we're doing here, what we could foreseeably do in response to that application is kind of like what we're talking about.
Yes.
So.
I think the board has to be aware of situations like that, that possibly, is there an enforcement issue down the road? So that, a lot of that sounds good at face value.
Right. But how do you know how many people are actually attending the event?
When you have a building that can hold 350, and you want to try to put a condition on that says you can only have 125 in it, it's not enforceable, unless I'm going to be the doorman every day.
That's actually what I was just about to...
[laughing]
...for this, but...
In your next career.
Right. You know, it would be a discussion, but you have to think of, is it feasible? Is it practical?
Right.
I have watched the planning board meetings and heard a lot of concerns. I would like to hear John Clark's take on...
I was about to say, let's hear from Mr. Clark, since he's sitting here.
First thing I want to just clear up is, this is in a residential district, residentially zoned district. And the only reason it's being allowed is because there's an exception in the code, or an allowance in the code, that by special permit to save historic buildings, you can do something like a hotel, or an event space, or whatever, a café. Those are permitted uses by special permit in a residential district. This isn't the Central Main Street District, where there's an abundance of adjacent parking options. You know, the planning board's been very understanding of parking restrictions in that area. But when you do, when you come to a building in the central business district, there is something like 1,750 parking spaces within a block of Main Street, when you add up all the on-street parking and the public lots. So that if one building can't supply the parking, there's public reserves out there in abundance, relatively speaking. But this is in an area of the city that doesn't have that. There's no on-street parking on Walcott. You don't want them to park event space and surplus parking, parking on Academy Street across the street directly, which is a threat, I think. If I lived in Beacon and knew the back roads, I would park there. It's the shortest walk. And then you have a bunch of people going down dead-end streets to try to find parking. So there is a constriction here. The planning board is very concerned about the intensity of use. It's one thing to have a hotel. It's another thing to have a hotel with a café. It's another thing to have a space that's going to be used for concerts up to 350 people. On top of those, this would create a parking deficit even during the day, because the hotel only covers the 31 out of the 32 spaces. So even when the café is open and the hotel is relatively full, people are going to go and not find a spot, and have to figure out on their own. They won't have a parking management plan, or people standing out in the driveway waving you to a different lot, or whatever. So there is a concern about the intensity of use, the three overlapping uses. There's... There's, so the first thing is that the planning board would have to give a special permit. And there's a dozen, half a dozen or more conditions that are in the law that they would have to satisfy in order to get the special permit. And one of the major ones is adequate parking on the site that won't affect the historic character of the church. So it wouldn't be allowed, for instance, to put the parking lot in front of the church. So they've pretty much maxed out parking on the site all around the hotel. And they're looking to use public lots and Beekman Street. And the concern is, is that number one, there's no guarantee that those spaces are going to be here in five years. The pandemic might be over and the parking might come back to the station and all the way up Beekman Street. And people go and get home from the city until 7:30 or whatever, and those spaces are taken. There is discussions, and it's early stages, of potential development on public lots. So that the city isn't wasting those tax dollars and spaces if they can figure out ways of stacking parking, for instance, rather than spreading it out on surface lots. So there has been talk about development potential on the Topkins Lot. Not only expansion of the firehouse, but actual development on that lot that would preserve some public parking, but wouldn't preserve it in its current capacity. The same on the City Hall parcel. So there's no guarantee that those parcels are going to be available three or four or five years down the line. That's our major concern. Normally, when you either put the development in a place where there's abundant flexible parking or if you put it in a place where there isn't, you have some sort of lease agreement that guarantees that that lot is going to be available to you when you need it on a Saturday night for a big concert. We haven't seen that as a possibility here raised. It's more that, well, if that lot's full, then we could go to this one a little further away. You know, Beekman Street is down a steep hill.
Yeah.
They're projecting walking up through the cemetery after dark presumably in the winter.
That could be a feature.
And there's five sections of stairs to get up that hill. So it's, the constrictions on this site are numerous that I, and there are two relief valves that they can apply to. One, the planning board has the right to modify the parking requirements if they consider it a shared use. And the applicant has argued that the cafe will only be open, won't be open when the event space is full. And so therefore, they shouldn't be asked to provide those 17 spaces for the cafe. And that could be, the planning board would have the right to consider that and reduce the parking requirement by 17, for instance. They may not. And then the second option is a variance, which is what you've been asked to look at. There is that exception for 64. If they reduce substantially the amount of capacity of the event space. But even that, I'm a little shaky on because they count pew spaces and I'm looking at that pew. And how do I know if there's eight pew spaces there in that front row or four pew spaces? When the Highland Current just interviewed the former pastor of the Dutch Reformed Church for that article that's been in the paper for the last few weeks. She said it was designed for 200 people. And she didn't say 336. I don't know how you came up with that number. But at least under the current proposal, if it's not applicable to 64, exception doesn't apply. So it's either a variance for 104, or the planning board could reduce it somewhat based on a shared use application. So those are the options on the table for the applicant. The planning board has concerns about the intensity overall, how the day-to-day operations of how, you know, people go back to that lot, find it full, what happens to them? We have concerns about overflow on residential streets in the neighborhood to the east. And we have concern that the public lots will either be overwhelmed by other stuff going on or maybe transformed into something else over time. So unless there's some sort of guaranteed space, you know, like the River View, if you could enter into a lease agreement that you are guaranteed that you have 37 spaces or whatever they have that are available when you have your events, that's something different. But rely on this potential for Beekman Street or the two lots that are closest seems to me precarious. And I think that's the planning board's position and they were unsure how to proceed. They get a sense from the zoning board if you would be willing to consider a substantial variance or how that might affect their SEACR ruling because they can't really pass this on for a variance until they make a SEACR determination. And the SEACR determination is based on parking availability.
Well, I think we have a legal obligation to consider a variance request that's filed.
Sure.
But let me ask you this, and I realize it's late, but just taking one or two steps back from the facts at hand or the more discreet facts at hand. We've got this church building, historical building. It's not being used right now. If we, for the purposes of discussion, if we took it as a given, that we absolutely have to maintain, preserve this church building and the city isn't going to buy it. So at the end of the day, someone's got to come up with some kind of a workable, commercial, religious, nonprofit, whatever proposal, so it's self-standing. What would the options be here? I mean, is there any way around this parking problem?
Well, I haven't seen, they haven't submitted any business plan to the planning board, obviously. But there is a brand-new 30-room hotel being proposed that the planning board can see happening there and they can provide parking for that. The cafe would be an accessory use to that and perhaps that's useful. And, you know, the hotel could sponsor special events, just not 350-person events. Maybe, you know, much, something much smaller. Is that enough to financially cover the costs of maintaining the church? I don't know.
Well, that's, this whole granting variances to make projects cost-effective is kind of a dangerous realm for us to be entering in the first place.
It's not a use variance, so they don't have to submit an economic case to you.
Right, we're not at the five factor, if I may, Mr. German. We're not at the five factor analysis yet, but one of the consideration is if it's the minimum variance necessary, which does somewhat tie into that particular category. I did just want to add one piece to Mr. Clark's comments. While it is a special permit, I mean, we always put this into our submissions for the benefit of those that aren't attorneys on the board. A special permit is tantamount to a permitted use. It's just a subject to specific criteria. So it's not a special use. It's not ha-ha special. It's a use that's subject to special permit criteria. So if it meets those criteria, the board has to balance those. So one particular consideration is, notwithstanding if this board did grant the full variance, the planning board, as Mr. Clark has pointed out to that board, will have to evaluate those criteria. And whether or not the project itself, on its merits, meets those criteria will be outside of this relief. So you could grant the whole variance. The planning board is still, as lead agency and the planning agency looking at that special permit, will factor those criteria. So I just wanted to make that specific point. And Mr. Clark pointed out the CMS regulations. You may all be familiar with the CMS's ability that gives the planning board much more latitude to grant parking relief. I used to see me coming to your board more regularly for CMS projects before the most recent amendments after the comprehensive plan update. And I would wave my white flag, which was, here are the parking variances granted for all of these uses on Main Street. And that was because before that code was updated, they were overly strict parking requirements and they also had not been updated in many, many years. I can say similar for this district or these particular historic district overlays. This is particularly unique. Mr. Jensen sort of highlighted it very eloquently, that this is a jewel, a beacon. It's a very important historic building. This request that's before you is not presidential in that, not presidential, but precedential, in that it's totally unique to the site, the area of Beacon, historic preservation aspects. There's a lot of things here that would make it distinguishable from any future applicant. So while the number, again, may seem significant, the balancing that you would ultimately, you know, look at in that five-factor test is very specific to the site. So I just wanted to sort of highlight that the CMS regulations have given the planning board, you know, ultimate latitude to the point where that board sometimes will look at only the residential component of a proposal on Main Street, knowing that the commercial use is unlikely to have some availability. I've only been on one project on Main Street, and that's a current project before the planning board, that actually is parking compliant. So just to give you a sense, and that's Main Street. Now we're off Main Street, you know, we're, as you see on the board, there's a lot around. We're all familiar with that hill. We've all walked it, cold or otherwise, probably in the wrong outfit because you were, you know, going out that night. But notwithstanding, we understand those. But we're really trying to come together with a full gambit of ways to address these, you know, the parking deficiency through these combination of available off-street and other private agreements that we're working on.
Drew, when we are considering SEACR, should we be focusing on the hard numbers? Specifically, the 104 parking spots? Or more generally, the parking? I guess, how are we distinct, or is there a distinction between what we'll be doing? I mean, clearly there is. There's not a five-factor test. But are we focusing on the numbers specifically or more generally?
I think it's a little bit of both, right? So 104, the variance would be for 104. So what's that do to the community? Where do the, and just for numbers sake, 104 cars go? But then also generally, what does a parking variance in this part of the city mean for the community, mean for the environment?
I guess my question is, what, you know, how are we distinguishing our role later from our role now? Are we, obviously, are we anticipating? Obviously, we are anticipating a variance request that will come. But how are we to prejudge that now?
I don't think it's so much a matter of prejudging it as it is a matter of providing an outline of considerations that would be pertinent, things that we could potentially do.
Right. Is that our role, though? Or is our role to give the planning board an opinion on the impact?
Well, the planning board is the one that makes the determination. But what we can potentially do in response to the parking variance request, which basically amounts to granting it at least to some extent, the extent to which we could potentially grant it or not grant it would be highly pertinent to their SEACR review of. So what's the impact of this going to be if it goes forward?
Well, I don't want to use the words grant or not grant because you're not making a determination on the variance. What you say at this point is not determinative of your decision on the application because you're not going through the full five factors. This is just to get your thoughts, you know, your thoughts and concerns to the planning board. Things you think are good, things you think are bad, things you have a lot of questions on. That's what we're trying to express to the planning board, specifically in the context of SEACR.
And specific to environmental and community impact.
Exactly, specific to environmental and community impacts. I would say that if you say, you know, this is the worst thing for the environment ever and, you know, this is crazy bad, and the applicant does nothing to change the project and it eventually comes back to the ZBA and you say, oh, this is great for the environment, that wouldn't look good. But that's not what this board is going to do. You're not making any hard decisions. You're giving advice to the planning board or you're raising more questions and concerns. And as Monto said, it's in the context of SEACR focused on community and environment. So don't think of it as granting or denying a variance. We are not at that stage.
It's a perspective, it's a point of view around those two.
Right. And the project could change by the time it gets to you. So we're being open-minded about, you know, what the project means for the community and then what this, you know, what are your thoughts on the variance?
And if I may, this particular application is an unlisted action. So there are three types of actions under SEACR. There's a type-two action, which means it's not reviewable by any agency. It's just, it's not reviewed. There's no environmental review process for a type-two action. This is an unlisted action, then the larger actions could be, are called a type-one action and they meet criteria that would require a coordinated review. This application is an unlisted, but in working with the planning board and zoning board attorneys, it's being done as a coordinated environmental review. So we're not doing SEACR. Sometimes we're before you and there may be a separate SEACR process because in those instances, it might involve a setback for a house or, you know, other consideration that would, the application would make sense to have it SEACR done with both agencies or it may not require SEACR review by your board. You are an involved agency in the planning board's review process. So we're tonight getting your input on whether there would be a potentially significant environmental impact from this project. Again, an adaptive reuse of a former church and the development of the hotel in the form of parsonage building, but intimately tied to the parking and off-street details.
Just a question just came to mind. Would the event space be feasible without the hotel? Just, I don't even know if that's possible, but.
No, I'm sorry.
The hotel has to, the parsonage, the rectory
So that, it's actually really, you actually make a very good question.
Because it's historic.
It's excellent question. We couldn't, it's an accessory to the hotel space.
Right, they need the hotel in order to have that event space. It's not allowed on its own.
Not a principal use.
Got it.
So again, the large events that's triggering this more
I was just thinking, if you didn't have to have the hotel, maybe that could be, you know.
The cafe would be allowed on its own. Dining facilities are allowed.
Right.
Hotels allowed, certain residential within limits. So there's five or six uses that you can, but event spaces only come in as an accessory use to the hotel. And one of the early questions we had is, you have a 30-room motel and a 350 occupancy event space, it seems like, which is the accessory use?
Right.
And so that scale of operation is still part of the special permit conditions that they're going to run into as being the most critically important. Or the first one is the size of the use, the intensity of the operation in relation to the size of the site. That's one of them shorthand. Adequate parking is one of them, that's why we're here. And the third one is the proposed use is compatible with the neighborhood, adequately buffered from any surrounding residential uses. So those are sort of the three hurdles that you have to get over. The rest are, you know, not as tough as argument, it's those three.
So how did we compose this memo, planning here? And then?
So before we do that, there's letters from the public, right? To help us?
Correct.
So we don't acknowledge?
That's, yeah, that's correct. It's not a public hearing. So, you know, you've received those letters. It's fine for you to read them, but it is not a public hearing. There will be an opportunity to have a public hearing before the ZBA. There'll be an opportunity to have a public hearing before the planning board. So the public will get their time to make comments before both boards. But now it's just the SEACR process and nothing can happen until the planning board concludes SEACR.
So I have to ask you this question. Can we take their content as? I have to ask you this question. Can we take their content as we consider what our thoughts on community impact is?
I mean, I think you're only human. You're going to read these letters. They have been sent to you. But I would try and kind of separate them out. If there's any questions that they raise, you know, make sure you bring them back to this table for a discussion with the rest of the board, with Mr. Palmer and his team as well. But I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't take those to heart quite yet. We're just not there yet. But if there's a comment that is raised that you'd like the applicant to explore or the planning board to explore, you know, we can fold that into what we prepare for the planning board.
Okay, thank you. And Drew, what is the impact of a positive SEACR declaration on the project?
Sure, so I always skim through that in our SEACR training sessions because we don't deal with it too often here. But once, if it is a positive declaration, the applicant then has to prepare an environmental impact statement. They have to do a scoping session, which is a public hearing that sets forth the outline for what would be included in the environmental impact statement. They then prepare a draft environmental They then prepare a draft environmental impact statement, there'll be a public hearing on that document when it's finalized. Then there is a final environmental impact statement, where the applicant then responds to every single substantive comment that was brought up on the public hearing on the draft environmental impact statement. Once that's concluded, the planning board would adopt it as complete, and then prepare a finding statement within 10 days after that. And that's just the SEACER process.
Right, so I guess it would, to summarize what you just said, it would trigger a lengthy, more...
Robust, maybe.
Robust and thorough examination of the impact, but it doesn't kill the project.
No, a positive declaration does not kill the project, just like you said, it just triggers a more thorough environmental review, where the applicant has to go through a very detailed process, and pretty lengthy process, to prepare the required environmental impact statement.
Sure. And I would just note that it's a very important point, you know, with the application, again, is an unlisted action, not as a type-one action, as far as the SEACER review is concerned. Part of what the applicant has submitted by, you know, presenting the traffic reports, preparing the traffic mitigation analysis and the management plan, those are the same types of documents that would come out of the funnel at the end of a review process. So what the applicant is doing is essentially saying, hey, if there's a concern about the potential environmental impacts, these are the ways that we're mitigating them. If those specific impacts that are already identified in this environmental review process are not sufficient, or the board sees them as still a potentially significant, not just a potential impact, not just the impact, but a potentially significant environmental impact, that would trigger the need for a positive declaration, or could trigger a positive declaration. So as far as our environmental review is concerned, the applicant has done what we would call sort of an expanded EAF, it's not just the form. If you just submitted the form, these are the, you know, sort of the triggers that the board might ask for these things, but understanding the limitations that, you know, have been highlighted, we've gone ahead and prepared all of these analyses to justify or support how, if there is a concern, or if there is an environmental, potentially, any potentially significant environmental impact, we've mitigated it because we have the availability of these off-site spaces. Mr. DeAndrea pointed out 164 off-street parking spaces within, you know, the quarter-mile of the site, you know, we've identified a potential private operator that would potentially have leased, you know, we have traffic management plans that's going to keep people flowing on the site, limiting restrictions, traffic circulation, we do have onsite parking, you know, all of these things are into our blender, so to speak, to try and help justify or support why we do not have a potentially significant environmental impact.
Let me just say there's, I'm not a lawyer, but I've been exposed to SEACER for a long time. First of all, you can scope an environmental review down to a very specific, limited number of things, so that it isn't an extended, long-term, very expensive process, if, for instance, you said, the only thing that we're really concerned about is parking, or parking and access, you know, drop-off and drop-in as part of the parking solution. They would have prepared a lot of what they, what, we'll make a difference in an EIS versus a planning board site plan review, for instance, is that you can require the applicant to do different alternatives, and then measure how those alternatives would work on the site. So for instance, you could say, instead of a 350 occupancy, what if we did a 150 occupancy? How would that change the numbers? Would that mitigate the problems? Would that be a better solution? So when you do an EIS, you actually can get alternative options studied, rather than just the proposed option, which, you know, sometimes is beneficial.
Worthwhile, yeah.
And we can also identify, that, I appreciate, and I don't disagree with the statement, that alternatives analysis is one, something that could come out of an EIS review, but we can identify that pretty straightforward, what the parking number would be for a reduced, we can tell you that there's about 200 people that could be at an event for the 86 spaces that are provided for by the parking exception. So those numbers can be provided to you. I think the important aspect here is, are we potentially causing a significant environmental impact if we have all this available parking off-site? You know, is the limitation that's created by the site, the 32 spaces that we're providing off-site, is that a significant environmental impact from off-site? And I know the planning board typically has a SEACER public hearing, I actually got myself learned it by Ms. Gray, that we don't have a subdivision, so they don't do it in this particular instance, but at some, I believe that when this project is in the form, that the planning board sees fit. I don't know that they're going to close the SEACER process before opening the public hearing, but that's just for your benefit, that the public may be commenting on this application prior to any formal SEACER determination. So a lot of these concerns or details regarding a positive declaration are well-stated and well-articulated, but the idea of our review process is to get all this information into that, you know, because we know what the concern is, that's why we're before you tonight, so we're trying to address those, and don't see that there would be too much more to come out of a positive declaration review.
So Drew, to Elaine's question, how do we proceed, just format-wise?
So format-wise, I think that the board, you know, it's 10:30, I think the board has done some really good thinking tonight. I would recommend digesting these materials and emailing me any questions, concerns, thoughts you have. That way I can keep a record if there's any additional information you think the applicant should provide, let me know, the sooner the better. I can reach out to Taylor and make sure that the applicant has it for the next meeting. I can also, you know, have that list to bring up those comments at the next meeting, you know, of who said what, here are your thoughts that you had after the meeting, and then we can start to use that to formulate a memo to the planning board. You're not forced to email me, I just think, or you can write them down yourself, I just think for efficiency, it would help if you send it to me, I can keep a list. And again, if you're going to bed at night, and you're thinking of, you know what, I really want to see that, let me know, I can, you know, ask Taylor if his crew can get that together, and then we can talk about it next month.
Okay, that sounds good.
Taylor, what was going on at the Municipal Plaza on January 21st that reduced the parking significantly?
So, in our, in September, November counts, we didn't look at the Municipal Plaza from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., because we figured that's when those spaces are being heavily utilized, because there's people working in this building, right? We looked at it after 5:00 p.m. So what you see in January is 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
On a weekday.
On a weekday.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
That's why it's more heavily utilized, there's less spaces available there.
The board asked, the board specifically asked us to add that to our report, for that, the exact reason.
The planning board he's referring to.
Smart board.
That's why they sent us to you.
Great, any other questions? Everyone has my email, so...
Should we CC the board, or just...
No, no, I would...
No.
What about the chairman?
No, because I don't want it to, you know, I don't want it to create, yeah, to create, you know, a string of comments. If you have the same comment as someone else had, you know, I will make a note of it on the public record, but I do worry about, you know, the board getting excited and talking to each other, and it might even be my own fault, you know, if I respond to everybody. I don't want to trigger a conversation. It should be had in the public eye, I just want to have a list of your comments, which would help, it's going to help me formulate, help create a memo that represents the thoughts of this board.
I may regret saying this, but would it be okay if we had people CC me on any comments they're sending to you?
Yeah, if you...
That's not going to trigger the open meetings.
No, if you just CC the chairman.
It's just the three of us on the email.
That's what I said, CC the chair.
Right, second person to help me.
Yeah, why don't you do that, just because that way we've got two of us who are trying to kind of amalgamate comments.
Yeah, works for me.
Right, okay.
So the email's going to be questions and initial reaction, or just questions?
Yeah, questions, initial reactions, thoughts, anything.
Or requests, if you have, if there's specific other details, you know, there was mentions tonight of other information, if there are specific requests that we can dial up, and it wouldn't be a board meeting if I didn't make a request of your board. If possible, we will be submitting supplementally, we have the same deadline as the planning board, they submit on the same day, and we don't want to give a bad taste of Ethas, we don't want to, you know, for the new, the changing of the guard, so we want to make a good impression, get things in on time. But we have about two weeks before that supplemental deadline, so if possible, in the next two weeks, if those questions come in, that way we can try and address them in our submission to your board, and that'll give you the time, too, to review our responses.
Good.
I'll send out a reminder email, too, or calendar right now.
We really appreciate all of your time, and this helps direct us, and of course, the applicants who's here, know what you're looking at, and making sure that these things go in, because this project has changed significantly since the onset, and I think, you know, we're here to make it a project that everyone will be proud of on the back end, so there's a lot to it, and we appreciate all of your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn our review session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right, folks.
All right, get your little girl to bed.
Yeah, I know.
[laughing]